Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call this Monday, April 5th, 2021, Meeting of the Bloomington City Council to Order. We'll start our meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thanks for joining us tonight. Hope you're enjoying the late spring, early summer weather out there. Doesn't sound like it's gonna last, but we'll take it while we can get it. It's better than the alternatives that we have seen here in April in the past couple of years. We've done our pledge. Next up, if Ms. Christensen, are you with us? And if you could call the role of the council, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga?
Present.
Councilmember Carter?
Present.
Councilmember Coulter?
Present.
Councilmember Lohman? I don't see him yet. I'll give him a second, just in case he's on audio. Councilmember Martin?
I'm here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Bussie?
Present.
I think we have six and seven members of the Bloomington City Council. I think Councilmember Lohman is on his way. He'll be logging in here shortly, and we'll call it out when he does arrive. We can move now to item three on our agenda, which is the approval of the, of tonight's agenda. At the suggestion of council, I think at one of our previous meetings, they did bring up the, the suggestion that we make it clear exactly which items are available for public comment and which items are not, and more of a study session kind of thing. So for folks tuning in, I do want to make it clear that on our agenda, items 7.1, 2, and 3 are, they will be part of a public hearing. We will be asking for folks to call in as part of the public hearing. Item 8.1, which is our discussion on the storm water, excuse me, the, the storm water poteration ordinance discussion, that is a, that's a discussion item. There will be no action taken. We won't be taking public comment on that. And it's a, it's more of a studies item for the, the council this evening to hear from staff on some of the work that they've been doing on that. Just wanted to clarify that for folks watching. Council, any additions, subtractions, or, or changes to this evening's council agenda? Hearing none, I would move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by myself and a second by Councilmember Carter to approve this evening's agenda. I will note that Councilmember Lohman has now joined us. Good evening, Councilmember Lohman. Hearing no further discussion on the agenda. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0, and we have an agenda for this evening. Item four on our agenda is the public comment period, and it's a 20-minute period that we have at each council meeting where we allow members of the community to come forward and speak to the council for up to five minutes on items not on tonight's agenda. And our first order of business, as we get into the public comment period, is always item 4.1, which is a response to the prior meeting's public comments. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Good evening. This evening, reporting on comments from the last couple of council meetings. At the most recent meeting on March 22nd, a number of callers related to an upcoming item having to do with the city council's consideration of an ordinance related to conversion therapy. Mr. David Clark asked a question about legal action and the range of costs of legal action. I think the, the best response to that, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, is it's impossible to estimate, especially in the absence of specific litigation. Generally, we estimate that litigation costs at least $100,000. That's generally the advice we give to staff whenever we're dealing with a lawsuit. And that anticipates various stages and, and appeals that may occur in the course of any litigation. So we have coverage through the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, and every, every litigation situation is unique and different, and they are all assessed as such at the time that legal action is filed. So other than what we generally provide as advice to other departments and to council when we're talking about these issues, it's hard for me to give a number that would be more specific than that without knowing exactly what the action being brought is. A number of other commenters on the 22nd, none of them asked a specific question. I did, on the 22nd, provide some response to comments received on the 15th from two residents, Natalie Moros and Andrew Thule. And then I promised I would come back and provide some additional information. Most of the information that I've provided is a follow-up on housing questions that were asked by Ms. Moros and Mr. Thule. And to reframe the issue for the council and those who are watching, there are questions about the Met Council and the Metropolitan Council and their, their determination of housing need within the region, especially housing that's affordable, based on future projections of growth in the Twin Cities metropolitan area and average household income and those types of issues. And I shared on the 22nd that the, the city has allocated from the Met Council a need for 586 units between 2021 and 2030. That's out of about 5,000 units in the, in the entire region. I think there was some general comments about the... They're general, sorry, we have some disruption that's occurring. There were some general questions about the, the, or comments about the nature of affordable housing and the fact that the council may be pursuing too much affordable housing or doing density that is, or development that is too dense for the, for the community. And can, you know, there were repeat references to low income and to density without any specification by the commenters about why those things are negative. So I thought I'd put together some information for the council and for the community to talk about affordability. So I'm gonna share my screen now. Chris, I think you have me set up as the presenter, right? So I will do that. All right. Hopefully you can share my screen. I'll strike the slideshow here. All right. So when we're talking about affordability and housing affordability, here's what, here's what we use as our standard. So the Metropolitan Council is using an area median income of $103,000 for a household of four. And so when we talk about what's affordable, we're using these numbers that are down here, that 80% AMI, 60% AMI. So these are households that have income at 80% of that $103,000, or 60% of that $103,000. And that's what determines if, if a household is eligible for housing that is at those various levels. So when we're using phrases like "low income," it's, I think, I think it's important to be clear about what level of income we're talking about and just who various people are at various levels of income. I think if you, if you do the math, somebody who's at 60% of the area median income is making a household income of $60,000. And I think that most people recognize that $60,000 is in a range of, of income that most people wouldn't necessarily assume is low income. Okay? So we have to be careful about what we're referring to as low income when we're talking about the type of housing that's being developed and, and who we're serving. Oh, the other note I'd make is down at the bottom there, that Bloomington's median family income is approximately 93% of the Twin Cities median number. And I thought it'd be good also to look at homeownership. So I'm sorry, on this, this is the rental, this is the various rental rates at these affordability levels. So if you're looking for a two-bedroom apartment, and that two-bedroom apartment is $1,800, you're at 80% of the area median income. Okay? So you think about how much rent is and, and what people are paying for rent, and that's what helps guide affordability levels. I thought it would be good to also look at homeownership. Okay? So 80% of AMI, based on the, the median household income in the Twin Cities, is a home that's valued at $293,000. So 60% is $228,000. And I don't know that a lot of people would assume a $293,000 house is something that would fall into a low-income strata, but we're talking about household affordability. And then I have a footnote down at the bottom here that I ran some numbers. If we had a $275,000 home in Bloomington on a 30-year mortgage with 20% down and then an amount for tax and insurance, that's about $1,400 a month for a $275,000 home. Okay? That fits squarely in this area of between 60 and 80% AMI. I thought it'd be good to talk about all of the different residential projects that we have in the pipeline. And there was a comment that the, all the new housing and the dense housing is being concentrated in areas of lower income within Bloomington. And I think the inference there is especially within northeast Bloomington. And what you see on this map is that new housing projects over the last couple of years have been distributed across the community. You'll see the ones in green are projects that have some component of affordability. It could be as few as, as 10%, or it could be an entire project. So for example, the Lyndale Flats apartment here, this is 81 units out of 81. That had a lot of different funding sources that came from Minnesota Housing, from federal tax credits, and the city was assisting with that as well. But there was just a small city participation compared to the total financing for that project. Look at other projects, like over here, there's a project that's being proposed where 144 units, but only 9% of them are affordable. Okay? So when we're talking about density and we're talking about affordability, you have to understand what the city's housing policies are and what the developers are doing in terms of bringing those projects to the council. Okay? So the concentration of new projects, I would say, is mostly in the South Loop. There are seven different projects in the South Loop, which is mostly commercial in nature. Where we're seeing other projects, I think they're fairly well-distributed throughout the rest of the community. And even over on the West Side, although we don't have many that have an affordable component, with the exception of 108 Place, these, these other projects tend to be senior apartments. And I don't know if the callers are intending to not include those in their consideration, but you know, there's 186 units of senior, there's 118 units of seniors, 130 units of senior. You know, this is relatively dense development, but it doesn't seem to raise the same level of concern. The other thing that was suggested is that we're doing all this housing and we're not concentrating on anything else. So I thought it'd be good to show non-residential projects that are in the pipeline. And what you see here is a number of different projects that are being developed, and most of them are occurring on the East Side, which means that we're having a balance of residential and commercial activity on the East Side of the community. The other thing I'd say is that a lot of this is redevelopment activity. And the place where you see redevelopment occurring are in the older portions of the community. So naturally, the areas of the city that have had developed or underdeveloped places for a longer period of time are going to be more ripe for redevelopment activity to occur. So it makes sense that there is more development activity occurring out here. There was a comment that all this development that the city is doing is going to cost taxpayers millions. And that's just a flat-out wrong assertion. And so I thought it was important to look at a tax value comparison of, of multifamily development compared to single-family development. So a median value home in Bloomington pays city tax of about $1,093 this year. And a typical single-family lot is a quarter to a third of an acre. So if we say 0.3 acres is the standard, that equates to a city tax of about $3,600 per acre. So if you look down at the list that I have below, you'll see a number of multifamily residential communities spanning the decades, having been developed here in Bloomington. And what you'll see with more dense development is much more beneficial for city taxes. So an old development like South Point, which is built in the early 1960s, has low density of about 18 acres or units per acre, and that generates about $9,700 of taxes to the city per acre. Indigo, which is the most recent, has 395 units on four acres for about 101 units per acre, which generates about $103,000 per acre to the city taxes. So you can see that it's not costing the city millions to develop housing, it's actually benefiting the city by having denser development. Now, I think that one of the suggestions, it may not have been said explicitly, but one of the suggestions about using the phrases "low-income housing" and "density" are negative attributions of those things. And often, people are referring to the notion that with low-income housing comes crime. And I think that that is a well-established misnomer that many studies have been done to demonstrate that that's not the case, but I thought we'd take a look here locally. And so I referenced Indigo earlier, the 2015 development with 395 units out in South Loop. And I looked, I had the police department pull calls for service over the last year, and there were 130 calls for service to that multifamily residential community of about 400 units in the South Loop over the last year. And then I thought I'd take the single-family residential communities in the area around where the callers live. And so about 400 parcels around one of those areas, there were more than double the number of calls for service to the Bloomington Police Department. And in the other area, there were about 25% more calls for service. And so there isn't a correlation of multifamily development and police activity that I think many people try to associate when they are talking about the, the negative aspects of housing development. There was a suggestion that we have heard, maybe not necessarily from the callers, but I've seen a fair amount of discussion on social media, that because of density and because of the city's focus on trying to do housing development that's affordable, that people are leaving Bloomington. And I, I don't think there's anything further from the truth. In fact, housing data that we received just today from our assessor is that the median percentage of asking price in Bloomington for homes on the market is higher than just about any city around. These are all of our surrounding communities. And you'll see that the percentage of asking price is about 106% in Bloomington. Savage, Shakopee, Burnsville, Eagan, Richfield, Eden Prairie, Minneapolis, Edina, Minnetoka, St. Louis Park, and also Maple Grove and another community up north were also below that 106%. The Twin Cities average is 102%. The housing market in Bloomington right now is incredibly hot. People are buying homes in Bloomington, and they're in very high demand. And the other thing is that people are not selling like crazy to get out of Bloomington. I mean, that's just a flat-out fabrication. So if you look at the numbers here, homes for sale in March of 2021, there were 62, which is half of what it was last year at this time. 83 in February, 84 in January. It's the fewest numbers of home on the market in the last five years at least, which means that very few homes are going up for sale, and when they do go up for sale, they are in extremely high demand. In fact, councilmembers will remember this article from the Star Tribune just last week, that a home in Bloomington generated 32 offers, all of them in excess of the listed price of $400,000. So I think that the suggestion that people are trying to get out of Bloomington is just flat-out wrong at this point. So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I just wanted to make sure that the community had a full understanding of what it is that we're trying to accomplish, what we're, what we're talking about, what we really mean when we're talking about housing affordability, and the success that we have within the community advancing those types of development. Bloomington is actually a really prime spot for development right now, for a number of reasons, not the least of which is that people see this community as being one with many amenities, and they want to be here. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Council, any questions of Mr. Verbrugge? The information he just responded with? Very good. Seeing none, we'll move to item 4.2, which is our public comment period for this evening. As I said, it's a 20-minute period that we have at each council meeting where we allow members of the community to address the city council on items not on tonight's agenda. We do limit the calls to five minutes, so to make sure everybody has an opportunity. And we also want to make it clear that it's not a back-and-forth, a give-and-take. We, we take the information that we hear from folks, and then we respond to their questions, to their comments, as Mr. Verbrugge just did at subsequent meetings. So you see the number on your screen now to call in for the public comment period? And if you have anything to bring forward, I would appreciate it. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak at their public comment period?
Jürgen, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Jürgen, we are ready for anyone who wishes to speak during the public comment period, which is Agenda Item 4.2. Do we have any callers for Agenda Item 4.2?
To provide a public comment, please press star 1 on your telephone keypad. We have a comment from Natalie Moros. Please go ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Moros. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Natalie Moros. I'm a resident of Bloomington. Over the past few weeks, I have continued to think and learn even more about conversion therapy ban proposed by the Human Rights Commission. And what do we have so far? We have a politically motivated issue that, from its conception, was given one-sided consideration by the Human Rights Commission. The ban will do so much more harm than good. It will also be putting the city at risk of huge, completely avoidable financial loss if, or should I say when, Bloomington once again becomes the defendant in a lawsuit, this time in a First Amendment lawsuit. The crux of the matter is why vote in favor of a ban that will harm so many? Allow me to share with you some of those who would be harmed by a conversion therapy ban. First, licensed therapists would be harmed. These are frontline health workers who are regulated by the state of Minnesota and help thousands of individuals and families deal with a wide range of issues as skilled professionals in the privacy of an office. Therapists play a critical role and are essential to the healthy functioning of our society. We should be supporting them and not criminalizing good wholesome therapy that is sought by families, families who are dealing with delicate situations within their family. Second, families would be harmed. If parents support conversion therapy, then it only follows that those parents could be reported to Child Protective Services by anyone with complete anonymity. As an educator, I have seen firsthand the firestorm of chaos and confusion in a family and irreversible damage to the life of the child during an investigation. Third, free speech and freedom of religion, which are protected by the Constitution, would be harmed. Thankfully, as you have all been made aware, courts have ruled in favor, in favor of the plaintiffs in First Amendment cases. You can expect the same in Bloomington if this ban were going, were to go into effect. Finally, and most importantly, children would be harmed. Children who are going through a wide range of feelings, thoughts, and emotions need more treatment options, not feeling. They need therapists they can talk to openly in the privacy of an office with options that align with their family's religious views and desires of the children, not limiting those options and squashing their hopes to resolve feelings they are struggling with, wanted or unwanted. Tens of thousands of people in America have undergone safe talk therapy to deal with issues around sexuality and are very satisfied with the results. We have heard some of those personal testimonies during earlier public comments. How can you, in good conscience, even consider denying children and the vulnerable that same opportunity in Bloomington? When you consider all of the information about conversion therapy, it becomes clear that a ban on conversion therapy would cause great harm to Bloomington from a constitutional, financial, and reputational standpoint. A responsible city council would never do harm to their own citizens. And for that reason, I trust that you will vote no on the ordinance to ban conversion therapy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moros. Ms. Wilson?
Jürgen, for our next caller, could, do we have Angie McKinley on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you please put her through?
One moment.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm a resident of Bloomington, and I am very proud to be part of this community precisely because of the city's effort to make this community a place where all people are welcomed and valued. The city of Bloomington's website states, "We are leaders for equity and inclusion." If the city is to remain true to this statement, the council must vote in favor of the ban on conversion therapy for minors in the city. To do so, we'll speak volumes to our LGBTQ neighbors, who should have the same rights to safe, humane, and ethical medical treatment as the rest of us. As the largest community outside of Minneapolis and St. Paul, Bloomington should be in alignment with our similarly sized metro areas in the treatment of conversion therapy. Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Duluth have all created ordinances that ban this harmful, widely discredited form of quack medicine. Every major psychologist organization worldwide has rejected conversion therapy and named it an inhumane form of therapy. This is not just harmful, it is dangerous and has been proven to be ineffective at helping LGBTQ people. Our city has an obligation to live up to its claim as an inclusive city by offering protection to LGBTQ residents against so-called therapies that have been methodologically proven to be dangerous and harmful, particularly to minors. These young people... These young people deserve access to medical help that will promote healing and mental well-being, and our city can play an important role in protecting those rights for everyone. Please vote in support of the ban against conversion therapy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKinley.
Jürgen, for our next caller, could you put through Katie Freyas, if she's on the line?
We don't have her line yet.
You do not?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And what about Leanna Freyas?
I cannot see her line yet, ma'am.
Okay. Those are the folks that had asked in advance to speak, so now we would go back to anyone else that's on the line wishing to speak during the public comment period, Agenda Item 4.2. Do we have other callers wishing to speak in the public comment period?
Yes, ma'am. We have the line of David Clark. Your line is now open.
Good evening, Mr. Clark.
Hello, how are you?
I'm well.
Is the self-storage unit issue, is that something that I can speak on tonight, or is that on the agenda?
That is on tonight's agenda.
All right. Well, I'm going to carve that out of my comments then and just address maybe a larger issue then about the city of Bloomington and just maybe rebut a little bit of the comments that Mr. Verbrugge just gave us.
I will tell you, though, Mr. Clark, item 7.3 on the ordinance for the moratorium, it is a public hearing, so if you've got comments regarding temporary storage units, you can make them at item 7.3.
Okay. All right. Very good, then. I'll call back and do that. Thank you.
Now, did you wish to make additional comments?
Jürgen, has Mr. Clark disconnected the line?
Yes, ma'am. His line got disconnected.
Do we have any other callers for Agenda Item 4.2, the public comment period?
Once again, to provide a public comment, please press star 1 on your telephone keypad. We have the line of Rod Wilson. Please go ahead. Your line is now open.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. I hope you've all had a gorgeous day out here in Bloomington today as we all are doing our jobs and contributing to the city of Bloomington and our homes and our lives and our families and such. I just wanted to briefly call in on the conversion therapy. I have strong feelings on the fact that no matter what therapy it is that we want to look into, whether child challenged people or adults and such throughout our lives, we all need the availability to be able to look further into what it is that we may want to achieve to better our lives. And so banning conversion therapy, you know, I just can't support that. And I would ask you not to support banning conversion therapy. That's all I got?
Very good. Thank you for the call, Mr. Wilson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Jürgen, do we have any other callers for Agenda Item 4.2?
There are no further comments on the phone. Please continue.
And just one last check. We had been expecting callers Katie Freyas and Leanna Freyas, but you're not seeing them on the line.
I'm sorry. No, I haven't seen their lines yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
And without anyone on the line, I'm going to make one last call if I can, please, just to make sure we don't get caught. Could we ask one last check? Ask any callers if you're waiting on hold and wish to speak on item 4.2, do you press star 1 to be recognized, and we'll patch you through. Otherwise, we're going to close the public comment period.
Did that get us anyone?
There are no further comments.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll close tonight's public comment period. I see Councilmember Beloga seeking to be recognized. Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the question is directed to the city manager, and it goes to the responses to the prior meeting's comments. While the manager did an excellent job in addressing affordable housing and a number of the items relative to affordable housing, there was a question also asked last week about shopping carts in public spaces that has not gone, that has gone unresponded. And I see that the person who raised that question asked it again today by email to council members. We do need to respond to that one. There was an attachment of photos, and there were four or five shopping carts queued up on an intersection near American Boulevard, and I don't recall what the cross street was. But I don't think that gives the kind of appearance in the public areas that our community is looking for. So I've said enough, and I'll let that item go.
Mr. Verbrugge? Noted, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Beloga. Thank you. That one did come in via email, and so I apologize, Councilmember Beloga, that I missed that one in responding for public comments. The, I know the chief has provided a response previously that the carts at the store where they're originating from do have sensors on them. And during the winter, what often happens is that the cold kills the sensors, and so they get away from the store. I don't, the picture that came in, I think, is a befuddlement because we haven't had that kind of cold weather recently, so we will follow up on that again, and we'll report on that next week.
Very good. Thank you much. So Councilmember Beloga will have an answer, be an answer to that next week.
Okay. Thank you very much for addressing that. And it was addressed during the public comment period on the 22nd, so.
Okay. Yep. I apologize. I didn't have that one in my notes.
Was a follow-up, so just for clarity. Thank you.
We can move on in our agenda to item 5, which is our introductory items, and item 5.1, which is our COVID-19 organizational and the public health update. First meeting of every month, we bring in Dr. Nick Kelly from Public Health here in Bloomington to provide an update on COVID-19 here in the community. Good evening, Dr. Kelly. Welcome. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. A year ago, we were anticipating a surge in cases as we started to learn more about COVID-19 and how it was spreading in our community, the state, the nation, and the world. A year later, we know so much more, yet we're watching the beginning of another surge in cases. This time, it's associated with a variant, B.117, which is a very different virus than the COVID-19 we've become used to. It spreads much faster and has increased clinical severity. We're starting to see younger adults hospitalized in larger numbers than we've seen before, which is largely due to the impressive vaccine coverage in adults 65 and older. We are in a race with vaccinations with this variant, which has become the dominant source of COVID-19 in Minnesota. There are simply too many Minnesotans not protected by prior infection or vaccination at this time. Combine that with a community that is tired of COVID-19, craving a return to a semblance of normalcy and a relaxation of mitigation strategies, and you have a recipe for rapid growth. I've seen clusters in the last two weeks that would not have been clusters last fall. The speed at which this variant moves is sobering. April is going to be a hard month. I'm concerned Minnesota is closely following the trajectory of Michigan with surging cases and hospitalizations despite higher than national average vaccination rates. We are so close. Now is not the time to let your guard down. Just because something is permissible does not mean it is advisable. I am looking forward to later this spring, when my kids are going to be able to hug vaccinated grandparents for the first time in months. We continue to increase our capacity to provide vaccinations, and our partners across Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield were approaching 2,000 vaccines a week. Our focus remains on priority populations outlined in the guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health and those who don't have access to vaccines elsewhere. I'm proud to report that later this week, we'll reach the significant milestone of 10,000 vaccinations provided to our community. Vaccines are the exit strategy for the pandemic, and as we prepare for that exit, we need to make sure as few of our neighbors as possible get COVID in the coming weeks. With the variant cases surging, stay vigilant and focused on limiting time in crowded places and indoor spaces with close contact. Wear a mask that covers your nose and mouth with two or more layers of washable breathable fabric that fits snugly over your face without gaps. Don't take chances with your neighbors, coworkers, friends, or classmates. Stay home if you feel unwell or have been exposed to COVID. Get tested. Regular testing is so important, especially with the variants that spread so much faster. I urge everyone to get vaccinated as soon as you are eligible and wherever you can, be it your doctor's office, local pharmacy, state-run vaccination site, or one of our clinics. If you've not already done so, sign up online at mn.gov/vaccineconnector or call 1-833-431-2053. That tool is going to be invaluable for helping our community get vaccinated. That is also the way that residents will be able to be notified about the new site that FEMA and the state of Minnesota are setting up at the state fairgrounds that's going to start operating next week. It's focused on vaccinating underserved communities with a high social vulnerability score, which includes the 55425 and 55420 zip codes here in Bloomington. We control our own destiny in this pandemic. Stay vigilant and be kind to one another. Much like the increasing daylight we're getting daily, the light at the end of the tunnel continues to go brighter. We're going to get through this together.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Council, any questions for Dr. Kelly this evening? I appreciate the urgency of your words, Dr. Kelly. It is absolutely true. We are, we're getting there, but we are not there. And I mean, I urge everyone, if you have an opportunity to get a vaccine, get a vaccine. If you have the opportunity to protect yourself and others in various ways, please, please, please do so. We've been through a very dark winter, and we're getting close to the end, and it would be just, it would be so disappointing right now to see our friends, our neighbors, members of our community contract this disease when we're getting so close to being on the other side of it. So please, please be vigilant, continue to be vigilant. It's, we're not done with the pandemic yet, unfortunately. I know we're all tired of it. Goodness knows I am. I'm sure everybody watching is tired of it. But we're so close to the end of it. We have an opportunity to, our exit strategy with the vaccines, as Dr. Kelly said. And as Dr. Kelly said, the outcomes are going to be just so, so much sweeter once we get there, whether it's, you know, hugging a loved one, or the opportunity to come to the farmer's market here at Civic Plaza and to be able to, instead of rush through, to be able to linger and listen to music and have a brat, or to enjoy public celebrations, or to get to a bar or restaurant and listen to live music, all those great things that we love to do through the summers in Minnesota. We just have to get there. We have to be vigilant, we have to be careful, and we have to get to them. So please, 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 we don't want to see anyone else in our community fall ill to this virus. So please be vigilant. Council, anything to add? If not, Dr. Kelly, thank you very much, and thank you for the update. Could you please, one more time, if you could give the web address and the phone number for folks if they need to be able to track or to sign up to be notified when they're eligible for a, could find time for a vaccine?
Certainly. It's mn.gov/vaccineconnector, or you can call 833-431-2053.
Thank you. And I assume all that information is available at the City of Bloomington webpage as well?
It is.
Very good. Good. Well, thank you, Dr. Kelly. Thank you. Moving on to item, excuse me, did I see a hand up? No, I'm sorry. Moving on to item 5.2, which fits very nicely into Dr. Kelly's presentation. It's a proclamation for Public Health Week, and National Public Health Week is the week of April 5th through the 11th. And boy, this year, more than any other, a Public Health Week, I think, is so appropriate and so necessary here in Bloomington and everywhere. So I am proud and happy to read this proclamation for National Public Health Week, April 5th, 2021. Whereas the week of April 5th through the 11th, 2021, is National Public Health Week with the theme "Building Bridges to Better Health." And whereas, public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, including disease outbreaks such as the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, public health action, together with scientific and technological advances, has played a major role in reducing and, in some cases, eliminating the spread of infectious disease and in establishing today's disease surveillance and control systems. And whereas, six in 10 U.S. adults have a chronic disease, and four in 10 have two or more. And health risks such as alcoholism, obesity, and tobacco use are the primary reason for seven of every 10 deaths annually in the United States. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic has illuminated and exacerbated racial inequities, prompting a growing number of state and local governments, including Bloomington, to declare racism a public health crisis. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim the week of April 5th through the 11th, 2021, as National Public Health Week in Bloomington, and call upon the people of this community to observe the week by helping their families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to better understand the value of public health and supporting opportunities to adopt preventative lifestyle habits in observance of this year's theme, "Building Bridges to Better Health." I think the proclamation speaks for itself, and as I said, it couldn't be more timely than right now, when we're so close to being on the other side of this public health crisis, but we just, we need to continue our vigilance and continue our work toward maintaining public health in our community. We will move on. Oh, I'm sorry. We have a video as well? I believe that's correct. Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. I believe we have a video as well.
In the early days, it was, the adrenaline was going, and we were working almost, it felt like 24/7.
Because public health has just slammed, right? I mean, they've been under-supported for many years.
These unsung heroes. They've, you know, kind of working quietly in the background, and then all of a sudden, this worldwide pandemic comes out and just shows truly what kind of great work they do.
I think the idea of public health people being involved in heroism isn't something we would have thought about a couple of years ago, but after 2020, what else could they be, right?
They became heroes by stepping up to the challenges that this pandemic brought forward each and every day, and they stared it down.
I remember when we first started going into the pandemic, and there's so many unknowns about it. And what they are able to do and have done is able to provide some clarity for us and some structure as to the pathway of what we should do.
What public health is doing is they're making these really critical decisions, and it's based on the science, and it's based on what's good for everyone.
We get it in real time, in that we can make decisions very quickly and efficiently and effectively.
They're also doing all their traditional sorts of services as well. They're checking swimming pools, they're licensing the health of restaurants.
It's been an extraordinary effort on their part, and I think they've been underappreciated because they're kind of in the background.
Some of the resources that they provide are underserved populations, with WIC and some of the other programs that they have are just excellent.
You know, the investment in early childhood education...
You know, the, the investment in early childhood education and the work that our public health team does with women infant programs is setting the stage for, for them to be successful learners.
I hope that if there's anything we've learned with COVID, one of those things is that public health is absolutely foundational and crucial in everything we do at the local level.
Because they've been shorted for many years and, and always thought of as important but not supported, hopefully that changes and people realize how important public health is and provides them with the support they need going forward.
The good news is that the vaccine is out there.
The, the best, most recent example, obviously, is our COVID clinic here at Bloomington Civic Plaza. I mean, behold the beauty and awesomeness of a well-oiled machine. They just do a fantastic job.
Now we're getting closer to, you know, what does it look like to get our community vaccinated and get our, get us back to what we, you know, remember as being normal days?
I just want to give a shout out to the public health in all three cities. They've done a tremendous job in dealing with this pandemic.
And I'm sure there's moments of frustration when you see people that don't want to listen, but you've stayed steadfast in the work that you're doing.
As a fellow public health professional and health nerd, I thank you from the bottom of, of my heart.
Being involved in a pandemic that I think no one necessarily anticipated, and the work that you've done goes unmatched.
Just incredibly grateful on behalf of all the staff here at City Hall and our residents. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you for what you're doing. You truly are making a difference in the lives of people.
From all of us and the emergency services, thank you.
To all of you who have worked so many hours, so hard in impossible situations over the past year, thank you.
Thank you to the city's Public Health Division and everyone who works there for your tireless work over the past year on behalf of the communities of Bloomington, Edina and Richfield. Greatly appreciated. Thank you so very much. Let us move on in our agenda to item six, which is our consent business. Councilmember Nelson has this evening's consent agenda. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I heard earlier that there weren't any holds, but just ask again if there's anything that came up that anybody wants to hold.
Councilmember Nelson, if we could hold item 6.7, please.
6.7, okay. And I'm going to hold 6.1, as is our custom, but anything else? Hearing nothing, I will move approval of items 6.2 through 6.6, 6.8 through 6.11. Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Nelson and a second by Councilmember Martin to approve this evening's consent business as stated. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you, Beloga.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. So, item 6.7, if I could, Councilmember Nelson, item 6.7, which I held, it's a resolution accepting an overdose detection mapping application program grant funds and making a budget-related, a related budget adjustment. We did have an emailer earlier today ask us to explain this a little bit more, exactly what this was, and I did want to call it out and have the opportunity. I think the, the emailer was concerned that it was going to somehow criminalize the, the use in such a way that it would be detrimental to folks who are, who are facing an overdose situation, and I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to clarify things. Dr., Dr. Kelly back or is it? Mr. Mayor, Chief Hartley should be with us. Chief Hartley, are you with us? There's the chief.
I am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council.
I can explain this item. Our police department, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just said please, if you could, that'd be helpful.
Oh, sorry about that. Several years ago, we were recognized by, our department was recognized for our follow-up in dealing with those that were arrested and showing signs of addiction. They were, they were, many of them were arrested on minor drug infractions and also those that we were treating medically for overdoses. Our supervisor of narcotics, our narcotics unit at the time, we were starting to see a trend, and so they created a form that would allow our narcotics officers to go out and do follow-up with the individuals or members of their family, not to further the criminal case, but to make sure that they were aware of all the resources that was available to them in trying to overcome their addiction. The state heard of this program, they liked it, and so we were approached, it's probably been over a year ago, and the beginning of this, this grant was, was formulated, and what this would allow us to do is to take part of the $90,000 and use it for supplies and the other $90,000 or $85,000 would be used to embed another social worker that would deal exclusively with chemical dependency and other addiction issues. So, again, it's another embedded, it's a partnership with Hennepin County utilizing the resources that they have in this area and embedding that with the police department so that our approach to narcotics overdose and criminal offenses is more so than just putting somebody into the just, the judicial system. It's actually focusing on the treatment and eventual removal of that person from a chemical dependency.
Thank you, Chief Hartley. Appreciate that clarification and the update on this, and congratulations on a successful program that we're continuing to move forward with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have no further questions, counsel. Do you have any questions of the chief on this item 6.7? Seeing none, I would move approval of item 6.7 in our consent business.
Beloga, second.
We have a motion by the mayor and a second by Councilmember Beloga to accept item 6.7 on the consent business. Hearing no further discussion by the council, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you, Beloga.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Martin, item 6.1. Excuse me, Councilmember Nelson.
I thought we were turning it over to Councilmember Martin, so just a quick change up there. No problem. Just wanted to, as is our tradition, recognize the generosity of our community with some donations that they gave. There was an anonymous donation of snacks for our police department from someone. Metro Baseball League helped out with the urban dugout project, and let's say about six donations to our public health department. We just heard how much they're doing within our community, so all of these are very much welcome and appreciated. Wanted to say thank you and of course, just as we normally do, send out those personal nice thank you to each of the people. With that, I would move approval of item 6.1 to accept those donations.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nelson and a second by Councilmember Carter to accept item 6.1 in our consent business. Hearing no further council discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you, Beloga.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you much, Councilmember Nelson. Let's move on to item seven, which is our hearings, resolutions and ordinances, and item 7.1, which is a public hearing for a vacation of public right-of-way and easements at 813134th Avenue South. We have our Public Works Director Carl Keel here this evening. Good evening, Mr. Keel.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. This is a pretty standard plat request to, to release some, some easements, and it comes with a recommendation of approval. Kind of the new ones with the new development will be dedicated to the city as part of the plating process, but we do need to release the old ones, so recommending approval.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Keel on this? My screen is just a bit obstructed here, so if you have a question, please just wave your hand, do it the old-fashioned way if you need to, if I'm not seeing you. Hearing no questions from Mr. Keel, I would open tonight's public hearing on item 7.1. Again, it's on a vacation of public right-of-way and easements at 813134th Avenue South. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone on the line who would like to speak to item 7.1?
Jorgan, do we have any callers for agenda item 7.1, vacation of the public right-of-way and easements?
Please, those have comments on the phone, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said. We have no callers on the line?
No callers on the line.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one coming forward to speak on item 7.1, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do we have a second? We got a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Beloga to close the public hearing on item 7.1. No further council discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you, Beloga.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0 to close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions or comments, concerns on item 7.1? If not, I would look for action.
Mayor, I'm happy to make that motion.
Councilmember Martin.
Mayor, I will move that in the interest of the public. We approve the vacation of public right-of-way and public drainage, utility, sidewalk, bikeway and pedestrian access easements adjacent to and within Lot 2, Block 1, Apple Tree Square, 5th Edition. It's recommended with the adoption of the ordinance approving the vacation of said right-of-way and easements.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Beloga to accept, accept the vacation of public right-of-way and easements in item 7.1. Hearing no further council discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you, Beloga.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. We move on in our agenda to item 7.2, which is another public hearing, and this one regarding the Lindell Avenue suburban retrofit strategy and incorporation of that strategy into the comprehensive plan. Julie Farnham from our planning department has been working diligently on this and has led us through this to this point, and we're going to hear from her once again as we take some of these final steps as we work this into our comprehensive plan. Ms. Farnham, good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Also with me here tonight, I will be doing the presentation, but also with me is the project manager, Barb Wolf, and Glenn Markagard is on the line as well, if there are any questions for him. But let me get the presentation up and we'll get going. Are you seeing the presentation? Let's see, I've got it.
Not yet.
Okay, let me, let me see what I got going here. Are you seeing it now?
Still no presentation.
Not yet, Julie. Okay, let me, you know, what I need to do is I need to share the screen. I think I did not do that, so let me, I apologize. I should be getting familiar with this. Let me share my screen. There we go.
There we have it.
Very good. All right, well, sorry about that.
Not a problem, please, go ahead.
All right, so here we are at what may be the final discussion on the actual planning process with this project, and I put together two items here in one presentation, but there will be two separate motions on this. So, we're, we're dealing with the final adoption of the strategy itself as well as then action to incorporate it into the comprehensive plan. There we go. So, what is the retrofit strategy? It's a plan to shape the future of the corridor. It sets a vision and some core principles for managing growth, and it also defines some strategies and, and positions the area for redevelopment. As you know, there was extensive community engagement around this project, especially during that first year, and there was a lot of support shown, expressed around this project. Some of the key takeaways were really support for expanding options for traveling along Lindell, a lot of interest in supporting existing and future small and local businesses, expanding housing options, creating more parks and, and open space, and also more fun activities aimed at families. We always like to show you, not for public notification, this is kind of our standard slide. Obviously, we have the usual things that we do. We also had a project website up over the last two years about, and last fall, we created a Let's Talk Bloomington card for this, and since that card was created, we've had almost 1,000 visits to that site. So, that's an interactive tool that we're using now. When we started this project, we wanted to make sure that it was grounded in some reality, and so the consultant team, it was important that we had a consultant that had market analysts. That was something we specifically asked for. So, our consultant team did have housing and retail market analysts, and we also, so, so these are kind of a summary of some of those findings, as well as we incorporated some of our own forecast tracker numbers in here. So, just very quickly, with regard to housing demand, we are forecasting, and this is a forecast, it's, it's not necess, you know, there's lots of variables that could affect the timing or the amount, but we're looking at a pretty strong demand and opportunity, I should say, potential in this corridor. So, 950 units potential over the next 15 years. Pretty much all of that would be multifamily and it would be geared towards empty nesters, retirees and young singles. And one of the key takeaways here is that it's this growth in residential development and residential neighborhoods along this corridor that will really help support, sustain and drive any new retail along this corridor. Office market is flat, it has been flat, not just here, but pretty much everywhere. Our forecast call for about 90,000 new office square feet. That's not a whole heck of a lot, but it's some, and that's largely because it's a great location. Retail, this retail has been, has been and continues to be really affected by changing markets and then the pandemic and everything else. The amount of retail on the corridor right now exceeds the, the demand according to the market analysis. And again, future retail will really be in response to new retail or new residential. And again, the shift towards more experiential retail and a decline in bricks and mortar types of retail. So, experiential retail where, you know, things like restaurants or, or things you can actually do and not, not just go to buy. The market analysis was done prior to the pandemic, and so we asked the consultant to just reflect back and, and how any of the recommendations or findings might change. They pretty much said that a lot of the trends that they reported on in their analysis would remain, and there was a lot of trends that were going on before the pandemic hit that, that will remain, like the changes in, in retail, for instance. But one of the things that they said is, you know, with the pandemic, it, it really underscored the value of open space and walkable environments, and we've seen that in our parks and, and everywhere. And then there's the continued demand and desire for affordable housing and neighborhood services, and again, this accelerated trend towards online shopping and shrinking up of the retail footprint. So, some of the highlights of the strategy, so the, probably the, the big idea here is that we need to be strategic and, and prioritize our efforts in the two key nodes that were identified as having the highest potential for redevelopment opportunities, and so that's around 86 and 96. Some other highlights would be to expand the multimodal options along Lindell, but also along some of the other area, roadways in the, in the study area. Improving the appearance and the environmental sustainability, this is an old corridor and it's, there's, there's areas of pollution, and so anyway, that is in, that would improve the Improving the appearance and the environmental sustainability. This is an old corridor, and it's, there's areas of pollution, and so anyway, that is in, that would improve things a lot in terms of transforming the character. Creating places for people to gather, strengthening connections between the avenue and the surrounding neighborhoods. One of the really strong points of Lindell is its adjacent solid residential neighborhoods, particularly on the west side and on the north end, and making connections between Lindell, making Lindell be kind of the main street for this, for the surrounding neighborhoods. There's opportunity for that. Preserving the unique history and character of Lindell was also one of the items that came out of some of our public engagement, and particularly maintaining some of what were called the hidden gems. So I'm going to dive into some of the more specific recommendations. So at the 86th Street node, the idea here is to expand on what is already a fairly good mix of uses, but the main idea here is to make it more residential, particularly on the west side there. Also looking at maybe being more flexible with some of the industrial area, which occupies much of the east side of Lindell, and as you know, we've got, a few years ago, we identified transitional residential, I'm sorry, industrial and protected industrial, with the protected being the more traditional older industrial or larger industrial, whereas, and so one of the ideas here is that maybe looking at being more flexible with that transitional industrial in terms of the types of uses and allowing a greater mix of uses in there. For instance, taprooms always come up as an idea, even residential, provided there are adequate transitional design guidelines or in buffering design guidelines and such, which we're starting to work on in another separate project, so that will benefit next steps in terms of implementing some of the ideas in this plan. As I mentioned before, there's some brownfields in this area, and particularly in this area around Lindell. This area also is subject to flooding. It's a low point, and so one of the ideas here is that by creating a regional stormwater type facility, it might remove one of the barriers to redevelopment. In this, these older properties that are small, it's really hard for people to redevelop and do anything different with their property and fit the parking and fit the building, and also then fit the required stormwater management on-site, and by creating a regional facility, you could allow individual parcels to basically ship their water off-site to a regional facility. But the big idea here, aside from, I mean, that's a big idea, but the other piece of that is that there's an opportunity, if you're doing something that's fairly substantial in terms of a stormwater facility, to make it an amenity and make it attractive and make it serve dual purpose, so make it be something that would enhance the area and maybe be a usable space. At 98th, the idea here is to really expand on some of the efforts that were started as a result of the 98th Street Stationery Plan, like three or four years ago, which had recommended proactively rezoning some of the parcels, and at that point in time, the council identified essentially the quadrants around 98th and Lindell to proactively rezone, but rezone the rest of the area as market demand as market demanded it. And what this plan is basically saying is maybe we should consider being proactive throughout this whole node to set the table and make clear the aspirations for this area. Some of the big ideas here are really going to be opportunity-driven, so when redevelopment happens, by having these ideas in the plan, it gives staff a nice tool to point to and have discussions with potential developers and show them, make clear what we're looking for. One of the big ideas here is this public square. It's depicted here on the Ford site in large part because there's no buildings there. It made the most sense to put it there, and it probably is the best place for one in this area, but it doesn't have to be. The whole concept is that somewhere in this node, there should be a fairly sizable public space. I would note that the Park System Master Plan identified this area as a gap area when they did their gap analysis, so this recommendation really aligns with that plan as well. Another big idea is this Aldrich Greenspan, essentially extending Aldrich through these two large parcels, the Clover Center and the Ford site. That does a number of things. It breaks up those very big blocks. It improves access to whatever redevelopment is going to happen there, and it improves circulation through there, not only for vehicles, but also for pedestrians and bicyclists. Then the idea of a green spine is just to make sure that it is designed in a way that is well landscaped and green, and so it feels welcoming and comfortable for pedestrians. Some of these other ideas are already kind of under the, in the works, so improving the public realm, some of that, again, that is really building off of the 98th Street plan, so there have been some changes to some of the sidewalks or the landscaping in that area, but more could be done. There's some pork chops in the area that maybe could be removed, et cetera. Improving access to transit in the BRT station with the orange line coming online here at the end of the year. I mean, this is a really fantastic opportunity. One thing that has changed since you saw this in, back in February, was that this plan now has included a specific call-out for a grade-separated overpass, essentially extending Aldrich all the way over 98th to the BRT station. And again, by having it in the plan, that sets us up to seek grant funding and such. There were two corridor-wide strategies. One was on mobility and the other was on open space and parks, so with mobility, again, the focus is really on creating, expanding multimodal options, and particularly putting a path along Lindell. I know that there's lots of challenges with Lindell, so it could be that it's on a parallel street, but the idea in focusing it on Lindell is because that's where people are wanting to go. Likewise, there's several pork chops, those slip lanes, those can be problematic for, or make it less safe for pedestrians and bicyclists, and so perhaps testing out some of these changes. We could do pilot projects or test in some other way. I know Public Works does lots of different kinds of testing to decide when to make a change in a roadway. Widening sidewalks would happen as opportunities as properties redevelop or replat. Similarly, there's, because there's so many small parcels that were historically platted along this avenue, there's a lot of curb cuts, and those are always just make the area less safe for pedestrians and bicyclists. So as opportunities arise with redevelopment to consolidate and/or narrow up some of those curb cuts, that's, those are the big ideas here. With regard to public space, I think that, you know, one of the, kind of a low-hanging fruit is to green up, green it up, and particularly important is putting trees along the street itself, and, you know, boulevard-type trees. It really helps reduce the scale of a big street like Lindell. And also, as I mentioned before, creating connections to the neighborhoods, the adjacent neighborhoods. There's Parks, Bryant Park, there's other parks in the neighborhoods, so making those connections between the avenue and the neighborhoods. We live in a winter climate, so fostering year-round activity and doing that, there's particular design criteria, and they have some ideas listed in the plan. Another thing that we all learned during COVID, that even when it's cold out, and, you know, if you want to get outside to socialize, there's, where there's a will, there's a way, so there are things to do, and we need to always be thinking about designing our spaces for year-round activity. And last but not least, enhancing connections to the Minnesota River Valley. There was also some strategies around retail and business in the corridor, and these aren't capital projects. These are really more staff-intensive projects, and really, it's about being much more intentional than we have historically been in terms of outreach to our business community to find out what are their needs, what are their wants, how can we work together with them, et cetera. So that's what these strategies are really focused on. The consultant also identified a laundry list of various funding or grant programs. There's a big table, if you looked at the plan. Some of the ones that we're all familiar with and we use on a regular basis are TIP abatement, grants, and public and private partnerships. There's a couple new ones that the consultant suggested we take a look at or we consider, and one of them deals specifically with the brownfields. They really felt that Lindell would be a great candidate for some of, for that grant program, so that's something that staff can follow up on and take a look at and see if there's any opportunity there. And then they also brought up this geographic equity fund. I don't fully understand it, and I can't really speak to it, but I do know that the marketing consultants has had conversations with some of our staff in the port and HRA and our financial consultants about the potential to utilize this fund. So next steps, as I mentioned, once the city council adopts this plan, then we need to amend our comp plan to incorporate the plan essentially, and that's a text amendment that we do. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. The other things, our project team that has been meeting, working together over the last year and a half, we're going to continue to meet and start to look at, you know, how to move forward some of these recommendations. So kind of pulling out those things that are non-capital items that are kind of staff-driven, some of those organizational things, like I mentioned about the outreach to the business community, some of those efforts are already underway as part of other efforts that aren't specific to Lindell, but they achieve a similar outcome. And so that's a really a matter of staff capacity, so we can look and see where we have staff capacity to move some of those things forward or put in our work plan for next year or the year after, whatever. Likewise, we want to look through some of the capital projects and see if there's what should get added to the CIP so that we can, you know, get it on the schedule, and also where there's projects that there's opportunity to seek grant funding. So that's how we intend to use the recommendations in this plan to try to implement and move things forward. So a little more about incorporating into the comp plan. So this is a formal process that the Met Council has, and essentially what we do in our land use chapter of the comp plan, we have a section where we provide brief blurbs describing the various district plans, the various studies, and other kinds of plans that we have, and so this would be like that. And so that means we need to just insert some text, and that text is included in the resolution for you to take a look at. And then the formal process that the Met Council has, we have to notify affected jurisdictions, and that's already been done, give them a certain amount of time to respond. Assuming the council adopts this plan tonight, I will be looking to get everything packaged up and submit this to the Met Council tomorrow. They have a 60-day review period, and then it would come back for a formal incorporation, adoption of a resolution at council, and that would likely be on the consent agenda. So, and I'm thinking that that might be with the 60 days, it would probably be in June. This is the text amendment. I'm not going to read this, but if you do have questions on it, we can come back to this slide. This is just showing you the jurisdictional review, so these are all the folks that we have to send any kind of comp plan amendment to. The ones in yellow are the ones that replied, and none of them had any concerns or comments. So as I said, there's two items on the table here, and I will, I have some motions teed up for you later after we go through the public hearing. One other comment that I want to make before I turn it over to the questions in the public hearing is just to note that this past week, I got an email from a resident who has been following this process quite closely and read through very closely and found some error in it, and so I wanted to point that out because we did swap out the plan and put the corrected version in on Friday, so I don't know if you saw an earlier one, but I just wanted to point out that it, the correction was on page 45 where it describes the B2 and the B4 zoning in the 98th Street node. It had the descriptions reversed, so the description that was under B2 was really the description for B4 and vice versa, and so that got changed. So that was a an eagle-eye catch by one of our residents. So with that, I will stand for questions, and as I said, Barb Wolf is here as well as, and Glenn Markagard, and then we can have the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Farnham. Counsel questions? I can start. I did have a question. You mentioned that it goes in front of the, to the Met Council, obviously, for a review, anything with a comp plan amendment that has to go through the Met Council. So remind us again how often a comprehensive plan is redone by a city. I know we just redid ours not too long ago, and when we're talking about a comprehensive plan, what are we talking about in terms of timing? Is this something that we're looking to accomplish in the next six months, the next six years, the next 60 years? Give an overview, if you could, just as a reminder, when we're talking about this as part of the comprehensive plan, what does that entail?
Oh, sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This particular amendment, so we just adopted our 10-year update, so we do major updates every 10 years, and that's a big process. In between those major updates, we have a number of minor updates, like you just looked at one a week or two ago to change the description of medium-density residential. That is technically a comp plan amendment, even though there's no actual changing of the land use designation or any other kind of designation or map in the comp plan. It's a text amendment. So it's not uncommon to have those kinds of amendments, and then there could be a redevelopment proposal that comes in, where they come in and they have to change the guiding and the zoning, and that's considered a comp plan amendment. So that goes through this process too, where you have to notify surrounding jurisdictions, and you have to send it into the Met Council, so there's all sorts of, there's lots of different things that constitute a comp plan amendment, but they're minor and small in comparison to the 10-year update. Does that answer your question?
It does in part, and I guess the answer that, or the question that I was asking, when we're talking about a comp plan, what's the timeframe that we're looking at here? And my point being that I don't believe that if we adopt this tonight, we're not going in and we're not, the bulldozers aren't moving in next weekend on Lindell Avenue. This is a long-term strategy. Play, I've used the phrase before, but we're playing the long game here and looking at a long-term strategy, how to best redevelop Lindell Avenue, and the ultimate decisions on a lot of these things will probably be made by members of this council who are not on this council yet, who are a long way away from being on this council right now, because this is a long-term strategy that we're talking about. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for clarifying that. Absolutely. You described it beautifully. This, this plan, like our district plans, and our comp plan, are long-range plans. They provide guidance for, so that when people come with specific development proposals, we can look to the plan for guidance, and particularly if somebody's coming in to rezone a property, we can, we always have to ask the question, is it consistent with our comp plan? The comp plan is also used to help us plan our, in our, and put projects into our CIP, or to go after grant money. A lot of grants will ask the question, is this consistent with your comp plan? So that's kind of how this, the comp plan gets used. It provides high-level guidance. It does not get into the specifics of how, of a development. It's different from a development proposal, and it does not force anything, it does not cause anything to immediately happen. We have to take follow-up steps, put it in the CIP and fund it, for instance, if it was, say, a road or a park improvement, or have a development proposal. Or have a development proposal come forward and then the council reviews that specific development proposal. But a plan of this sort in and of itself, it really just sets the vision. It provides the guidance so that when those specific proposals come before you. You have something to look at and kind of check back to and say, yes, this this meets where we want to go. So that you're not just making those decisions on on individual development projects, you know. Without any context, this provides the context.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. That's that's actually what I was looking for, and I appreciate that clarification for it. Counsel, any questions on this? I am not seeing any hands up. So what I would like to do right now is open the public hearing on item 7.2. Which is the Lindell Avenue suburban retrofit strategy and incorporation of that strategy into our comprehensive plan. So the public hearing is now open. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak to item 7.2?
Jürgen, do we have any callers for agenda item 7.2?
No callers at this time, ma'am.
No callers on the line at all?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, we have no callers on the line, no one coming forward to speak at this public hearing. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 7.2.
So moved Colter?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Colter and a second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing on item 7.2. Hearing no further counsel discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beluga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing on item 7.2. Counsel, and additional questions, comments, concerns regarding this? This is a, I I tip my hat to our planning department. This was a lot of work. I understand that. And this was something that's a an important next step, I think, as we look at the future of Lindell Avenue and and that portion of our of our community. It's a, it's an important step, an important long range plan to look at, to envision, to to dream about how we want Lindell Lindell Avenue to look sometime in the future. Councilmember Colter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I was really just going to say a lot of what what you just said just now. I I think this is a really exciting plan. I think this is a really exciting opportunity in an area that, you know, we know has has needed this kind of vision, I think, for for quite some time. And, you know, when we we talk about the future, when we talk about economic development and redevelopment and and, you know, what what we want to see. And when I say we, you know, I don't just mean those of us on the council or or staff, but really the community. I mean, this is, this is informed directly by the folks who live and work, you know, on and around Lindell. And and I think it's it's a really exciting plan. I I think it's bold. But I I think it it, you know, as as was referred to earlier, I think it really respects and and values the history of Lindell. And and why folks really, really appreciate that stretch of of what what some call downtown Bloomington. So I'm I'm just really excited by this. I I think we've got a lot of work ahead of us. But I I also just want to thank staff. I think this has been a a tremendous amount of work and and. I I hope this is the kind of thing, you know, on a on a smaller scale. I hope this is the kind of thing that we can see more of in the future, because I I think this is just really, really exciting. So thank you.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, customer Colter, you know, talked about it already. We think that we'd have a little more fanfare with the downtown Bloomington being revitalized. But so I'm excited to see that, especially around the ideas of our improvement and around the business strategies that we're working with. Direct load strategies, as had been outlined earlier, and then also around our improvement around environmental sustainability. So I'm really looking forward to seeing what, Mayor, as you put it, future councils will have their opportunity to dig into this, who may not be seated today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real briefly, I'll I'll echo my colleagues. Thanks to to staff and our partners at Stan Tech, all the work that went into this. I I do, I guess I'm I'm most curious moving forward. Obviously, we've heard concern raised earlier in the night about just kind of density and things like that. But I think it's important to look at this kind of in a broader picture. I know I talked to neighbors over here on the east side in District Four. Maybe they built their house over here after World War Two or up into the 70s and they're they're thinking about moving on, hopefully staying in Bloomington. And wondering who comes next? What's the next family that that buys that home, that puts down roots, that invests in the community? And having areas of vibrancy like this where people want to shop, they want to walk around, they places to be to be proud of in the community. I think benefits are are lower denser density, maybe quieter areas of the community as much as it is an exciting focal point. So I'm just really excited to see the the ripples that stuff like this sends across the city. It's going to be pretty neat.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Counsel, anything additional to add? If not, I would look for a motion. Councilmember Loman?
Well, Mayor, I'd be happy to second a motion by Councilmember Martin. I believe a lot of this is in your district.
Councilmember Martin, would you be willing to put our two motions forward for us tonight?
I am happy to. Thank you, Councilmember Loman.
Please.
Mayor, I will move that in this case, we adopt the ordinance amending chapter 21 of the city code to establish additional standards. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong section. Forgive me. We'll get to that one in a minute. Mayor, I'll move that we approve the resolution to adopt the Lindell Avenue suburban retrofit strategy as attached to the city council packet.
Second, Councilmember.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Loman to approve a resolution to adopt the Lindell Avenue suburban retrofit strategy. Any additional discussion, counsel? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beluga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Omen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Martin?
And Mayor, I will also move that we approve the resolution to amend Bloomington's comprehensive plan to add text describing the Lindell Avenue suburban retrofit strategy as attached to the council packet.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Loman. To amend the Bloomington comprehensive plan to add text describing the Lindell Avenue suburban retrofit strategy. Hearing no further counsel discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beluga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Once again, thank you to staff for your work on this. Thanks for all of the public input that we received. And to everyone who obviously care a great deal about what Lindell Avenue looks like and works like and will operate like now and in the future. Your input was was greatly appreciated and and thanks to the council for your support on this and for the work that went into this. It's, this is a, this is a big deal and I'm I'm happy we we got this completed and I'm happy it's part of our our comprehensive plan now. So congratulations.
Thank you, counsel.
Let's move on to item 7.3 on our agenda this evening. It's another public hearing. And this one regarding our self storage ordinance, which is establishing standards and removing the temporary moratorium. That we had in place on the self storage facilities here in the city of Bloomington. And I believe Sean James from our planning department is going to lead us on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
City council members. So correct, there's an ordinance before you tonight to consider additional standards for self storage facilities. As well as to remove an existing moratorium on the use. So that moratorium was adopted in June of last year. Since then, staff has conducted a zoning study. Analyzing various approaches and we've gone before the planning commission, city council at at study meetings. And now before you tonight with the proposed ordinance before the moratorium. Which is set to expire in Jan- in June, a few months here. So a little bit of background, Bloomington has more self storage facilities than its neighboring cities, than many of them that are neighboring. This has come about because we've seen four new facilities in just the last few years here. That have doubled our supply of storage units. So now we have over 6,000 units for the city. It's safe to say that demographics in the city and the metro. Definitely support the demand for self storage, especially with numbers of young adults that tend to move around. More often, self storage is a is a convenience and offers flexibility. As well as those that are, say, empty investors or seniors retirees, now they might be looking to downsize now. But still hold on to their family belongings. So self storage is an option for them as well. So Bloomington definitely has large numbers of these two demographics. But staff has concerns that Bloomington is absorbing too much, or rather a disproportionate share of the regional demand. Notably, the cities directly to northwest of us have very little self storage facilities. It's largely because their zoning does not support self storage or they have limited zoning that would allow it. And just a quick fact too, is we have 7.6 square square feet per capita, which is the second highest in this portion of the metro area. So we have nine self storage facilities scattered through the central part of the city and then one out to the west. This area, you know, matches up with the zoning in blue here that allows them. So we allow self storage with a conditional use permit in our industrial one, two, and three zoning districts. So a little bit about the the zoning study. Staff conducted the study, identified these three primary issues. Already spoke a little bit about the disproportionate supply. But you know, one more number is we have enough self storage units to serve 18% of our households. In comparison, nationwide average is that around 10% of the nation's households have used self storage in the past year. So a little bit about low activity then, in industrial areas where self storage is allowed. Some of these areas are really intended to employ more people than self storage would support. There's also sites where the city would prefer, you know, we just heard about the Lindell Avenue plan. The city would prefer prefer some of these areas that are to be more pedestrian friendly and more active, however they. Today, they would allow self storage. And and the next issue is impacts on adjacent uses. So this has especially been noted by residents that have lived near self storage facilities in the past. That have raised concerns related to lighting and the height of those buildings creates a nuisance. So you can see on the picture here, some of the new facilities, they're especially multi story. They can contain that glass facade that's lit up from inside. So staff's recommendations then are intended to directly address these issues that are that I just spoke on. And I'll touch more on each of these in the next few slides. So the first recommendation is to prohibit in our transit station areas. These areas are intended for uses that support greater employment, more living opportunities. And these are the one half mile distance from the transit stations themselves. So this provision would create one nonconforming facility, nonconforming use. And it would apply to roughly 60 parcels. So notably, it's those two proposed orange line stations along 35. The next is just to prohibit self storage on any parcel that's adjacent to Lindell Avenue. So as we just heard, this corridor is intended for more pedestrian friendly or broader mix of uses. We already have two self storage facilities on this corridor and there's, you know, several more that are not far away. So again, this provision would create two nonconforming facilities. The next is to prohibit in protected industrial areas. Remember, the city designated these areas that are identified in the hatched red on the map. These areas as protected industrial in order to maintain a balance of land uses. Keeping traditional industrial uses in these areas that offer more employment opportunities. And you know, greater opportunities for living wage employment. So two facilities in these areas also. And then this last provision is to create a structure setback of 500 feet from a residentially zoned and used property. So this is a response to concerns we've received in the past from residents. The increased distance is intended to reduce impacts from lighting and the height of the building. We'll take a little bit closer look here later on in this presentation. But there are seven facilities within this 500 foot distance today. So in red on the map is all of these areas combined. I would note that there's also development standards too. So if there's kind of fragments of parcels here and there. It may not be developable if they're small, still having to meet some of these other standards. And these are some of the remaining sites then, if you factor in some of those other standards. These sites could possibly feasibly allow self storage with the proposed amendments. I would note, however, many of these areas already have an existing viable use. They're not necessarily vacant. They're simply areas that fall outside of. The boundaries of these provisions. So there with the staff's recommendation, there's seven nonconforming facilities. And roughly, you know, 65 parcels remaining. It's not to say that each and every site would. Would have the ability to support a self storage facility. So I did want to note, the majority of the planning commission recommended approval with two modifications to staff's proposal. So they felt that staff's recommendation was a little bit too restrictive, you know, to targeting of self storage. And they suggested to reduce that residential distance, that residential buffer from 500 feet to 250 feet. So that's that lighter color red on the map. And they also recommended allowing self storage on Lindell Avenue. But outside of those two development nodes that were identified in the retrofit strategy. So those nodes are the hatched area on the map. And we'll also take a look at a closer look at where this applies. But that, so they proposed, you know, not allowing on Lindell within those hatched areas. But outside of those hatched areas, they suggested on Lindell to require enhanced design standards. So there's a few more remaining available sites with the planning commission. Recommendation. Did want to point out, so those areas that are added, other parcels along Penn Avenue. And then also over to the east along Wentworth. And or that Wentworth and Pillsbury. And then the Toro site also. And some of these other areas, they're just a little bit larger now without that. With the 250 foot setback instead of 500 feet from residential. So let's take a little bit closer look at this distance or buffer from residential properties. And we're zoomed in now on 94th Street and Penn Avenue. So the darker colored parcels are those residential uses. And in red is this this buffer where that 250 foot distance would apply and effectively prohibit. A self storage facility building. However, these other areas that aren't colored, that aren't covered in in a red color. They would still allow a self storage facility building. And so some of these parcels along Penn Avenue. would still allow conceivably a self-storage building just a little bit further back than where the buildings are located today. Compared with the five hundred-foot distance with staff's recommendation, you know, this distance really covers most of these parcels that are adjacent to Penn Avenue. And when you factor in, you know, structure setbacks required of any type of development, these kind of fragments of what's left to develop really aren't feasible for any self-storage facility. So this five hundred-foot distance effectively prohibits self-storage along Penn Avenue.
Mr. James, if I could ask, and I think you're actually going to answer the question, and I'm wondering, because you brought up Penn and Ninety-Fourth and then the area, the existing self-storage facility on Penn Avenue in this neighborhood, what's the setback on that right now? Do you know?
Yeah, so roughly, if you were to measure by these same standards, you know, including the street here, the distance is roughly a hundred fifty feet or just over. And this is what that looks like.
Yep.
And so you'd be measuring from, you know, here to the base of the building is roughly a hundred fifty feet.
Great, thank you. That's helpful.
So I did want to note, you know, again, we have the class facade buildings, the sign that's lit up at night. And here's another view, too. Now, this bottom is showing the Penn Avenue and Ninety-Sixth Street intersection. This pink building on the map here is the self-storage facility. But I wanted to show the elevations, what that looks like. So if we look at the existing, you know, if we assume that the house is maybe fifteen feet tall, that dashed line is, you know, assumed vision vantage point or line of sight from the residential building. Then if you assume you have, you know, trees of some sort, maybe thirty feet tall, now they may or may not screen the building that's only a hundred fifty feet back. Granted, I would note the trees that are on that property today. I think they're only in the corners, but they are maybe taller fifty feet or so. So they do screen the building in some locations. Now, if you have a little bit further setback, two hundred fifty feet in this example, the second line here, the vegetation doesn't need to be quite as tall in order to be screened from, you know, signage or those glass facades. And then compared to the five hundred-foot distance, you know, the same is true. The vegetation can be a lot shorter at the street level. But really, in this case, it's more likely than not that there would be some other building here blocking the view. So the next planning commission recommendation was that about Lindell Avenue, you know, to allow on Lindell outside of those nodes, but with enhanced standards, enhanced design standards. So if we look at Ninety-Eighth Street node first, again, hatched here, it really doesn't apply for this specific standard. Only the Veep site is included in this node that would allow self-storage, and it's not on Lindell anyway. The Eighty-Sixth Street node does apply, would effectively limit self-storage. I doubt to the north of this node, you know, you have the Toro site. It's not unlikely to, or that's not likely to redevelop to self-storage anytime soon. And then this is a US Bank site. However, that's right next to residential, so that would self-storage wouldn't be allowed with that provision, the buffer from residential. So we're left with these sites south of the node. And this is where the planning commission's recommendation would be to allow self-storage on some of these sites. Would note, we already have two facilities. You know, this is a U-Haul facility, and this is, I think it's public storage. However, when you add the residential buffer on top of this area, you know, again, with that five hundred-foot buffer, it would really limit which sites along Lindell would be feasible. Whereas with the planning commission buffer, you know, some of these would still be feasible, just further setback from the road. And just a reminder, too, staff's recommendation is to prohibit on all parcels adjacent to Lindell Avenue. So this is just a little bit examination of planning commissions. So outreach for this, staff sent out letters directly to property owners that were impacted, so those industrial zoned property owners and self-storage facilities included. That was back when the moratorium was first being considered, and then we mailed a follow-up letter after this study was conducted, after those study meetings in January, letting them know about next steps and how to provide feedback. So we also update our zoning updates page that's shown on the screen here. And we offer the e-subscribe emails. Those are sent out regularly as meetings approach to notify those of upcoming meetings, as well as publication in the some current. So there's a couple motions. This is staff's recommendation, or staff's recommended motion to adopt the ordinance as proposed. Or there's a planning commission recommendation, which would continue the item to a different date, further looking at their recommendations. And then if the ordinance is adopted, I've got a summary motion, summary publication motion. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Also, any questions for Mr. James on this? I see Councilmember Loman, Councilmember Loman, and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. So really, just one question. I know you, James, you had gone over the the lighting piece, but what I wanted to understand is that, my understanding is that the five hundred-foot number would would provide the greatest level of protection for residents living in residential properties around these storage facilities. Is that correct? That would be correct. Okay. And it, I did read that there were some standards that could be put in place that the planning commission was recommending, and that's why they thought the two fifty would be okay. Help me understand how that helps to bring forward. I didn't see it in the presentation, how that would help to, are we talking about just vegetation, or what are we talking about that would help provide that protection to the resident on the other side of the street?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman. So as a conditional use, staff has attached standards related to lighting for some of the more recent applications. So we've now required that lights be off. You know, say, after nine PM or ten PM, when hours of operation are limited, or we might require motion sensor lighting. So if it is a twenty-four-hour facility, you know, lights are only on when people are there. So that, you know, the intent is that these facilities aren't lit up throughout the night. We've also required that some of the lighting be made more dim, kind of in line with some of our signage standards. But staff, you know, when analyzing the different approaches to this ordinance, felt that the CUP, the conditional use permit, was kind of effective in applying those standards kind of on a case-by-case basis, because you're right, there might be vegetation that would effectively screen in some locations, and maybe, you know, maybe motion sensor lighting could create more of a nuisance than than not having it. So we like the flexibility that the CUP provides for that, for those types of standards.
So the staff is saying that they like the two fifty with the with the CUP? Or the five hundred that was put forward?
Yeah, so Councilmember Loman, planning commission is recommending the two fifty feet with the CUP, and staff is recommending five hundred feet, but still the CUP.
Fixed verification. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mr. James, so my understanding is the residential buffer would apply to residential properties that exist at the time of application. Is that accurate?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that's accurate. We say residentially zoned and used.
Zoned and used, okay. That's what I wanted to clarify, because we just spent some time talking about the Lindale Avenue retrofit and potentially in the future, other places where it may make sense to have more of a mixed use from a converting from the retail into a mixed-use facility. And so what I'm trying to figure out is how this would apply, if at all, or if it should apply to properties that the council thinks would make sense to be at least some component residential in the future, if they are not now. And do you have any sense of, you know, given recent conversations about Lindale and other places? I mean, if, obviously, if the Lindale Avenue corridor is in there in its entirety, that's that's taken off the plate, that's taken care of there. But are there other areas of the city that may be problematic, that makes sense to have some residential component as they get redeveloped in the future, where we may want to have this buffer in place?
Mr. James?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, who's pulling up this slide here. You know, as long as self-storage facilities are located in industrial districts, you know, given the existing provisions, too, that are on the plate tonight, now there are very few areas where self-storage would be near residential. I did want to note, though, that we have some of those transitional industrial areas. And there's quite a few transitional areas in that Lindell corridor. So, you know, if those were ever rezoned to support residential, there might be conflicts in those areas.
So and would that be addressed by what staff is recommending in terms of including all of Lindale Avenue corridor?
So, right, with the standards before you, you know, as as residential goes in, that buffer from residential would would increase. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, kind of. Again, my concern is that something could get in there, and then you build residential or change something to residential later, and it it has the exact conditions that we're trying to avoid when we know at this time that that's probably a good area to build residential, but something that's part of a vision that we just approved. And so that's the part that I'm struggling with, is how to address that specific aspect of it.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson. Yeah, so these are the remaining, you know, viable sites with all the standards applied, the staff's recommendation. Now, there's maybe a handful of these sites that are transitional industrial located off of Lindell Avenue, though. However, today, they're fairly strong industrial uses. It's not to say in the long term, they might transition. With this approach, staff has tried to balance, you know, maintaining some of our industrial properties and you know, still finding areas that new self-storage could locate. So now it's addresses some of the issue. It's tough to say where residential could be in the future, but you're right, you know, with the with the Lindale Avenue plan, we could see more residential on this corridor here, and you know, that would be closer to some of our industrial properties.
Okay. Just this second question or area of questioning, in terms of the setback, the two fifty versus five hundred, that would only apply to this type of use. So in theory, I could build a three-story building with a similar facade as self-storage, with a similar illuminated sign, and I could build, I could still build that a hundred and fifty feet away from somebody's house. Is that in general accurate?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that's true. Self-storage does have some unique aspects to it with those glass facades. But you're right, there might be other users in the future that catch on and like that appearance, and they could do something similar.
And the only reason I bring that up is not to say that we shouldn't have those setbacks, but to say that I think there may be a need to have a broader look at that before something happens. I think a lot of what we're seeing in some areas is a taller building, a mixed-use building, and, you know, what types of things might we see on those that will impact our residential neighborhoods? How do we have those buffers, those transitions in an appropriate way? And I guess, you know, ultimately, my question on that is, does it make more sense, instead of a specific setback for this use to have more standards in terms of illumination, in terms of screening, those types of things, so that any use would have to meet those standards?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, you know, that's a fair approach. It would probably take a little bit more analysis to see, you know, what type of uses would be impacted and how so, you know, the scope of this was solely self-storage facilities, but.
Yeah, Mr. James, I totally appreciate that, and that's that's spot on. It just raised that question in my mind, is that, you know, instead of going through and defining this by each individual use, does it make sense, given what we're maybe potentially looking for in redevelopment, may have similar aspects, may not, I don't know. You know, if we just define what the problem is and what we want to see, then everybody has to meet those, as opposed to doing it by use. So I think you guys did a real nice job in terms of this and what was asked here in terms of the moratorium and this specific use. It just brought up a broader question in my mind that may merit some looking into. So thank you, Mary. That's that's really all I have. I just wanted to raise the issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Good points. Council, any additional questions before we head to our public hearing on this? I do not see hands going up at this time. So I will open the public hearing on item seven point three, the self-storage ordinance establishing standards and removing the temporary moratorium. So the public hearing on item seven point three is now open. Ms. Wilson, do we have any callers?
Jorgan, do we have any callers for agenda item seven point three?
Yes, ma'am. And to provide a public comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad. Your first comment on the line comes from Vicky Hoogem. Please go ahead. Your line is now open.
Good evening and welcome.
Council, I hope you can, thank you. I hope you can hear me.
We can, if I could ask you, please, just to repeat your name, so we have it nice and clear for the for the record, and then, please, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Vicky Hoogem, and spelling is H-O-O-G-H-E-E-M as in Mary. I am calling as someone on the east side who seems to, who that believes that we have way too many storage facilities already, especially on my side of town. I personally do not support the planning commission's idea. And I, if one idea is picked over the other, I would go with the staff's recommendation. But I do think maybe a little more work needs to be done on this, as Bloomington has become the city where this has become the place to go for storage facilities. And I just don't want to see that trend continue. I'd rather see more housing development, more small businesses, and not more big commercial storage facilities. So that is all I'd like to share with you tonight, and I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hoogem. Appreciate your comments. Ms. Wilson?
Jorgan, do we have another caller?
Yes, we have David Clark on the line. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Clark. Welcome back.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So on tonight's agenda, we have this discussion that's planned. that's planning to end the moratorium and the self-storage units, which may seem irrelevant to many. Maybe they're not plugged in or don't really, you know, pay attention to the issue. But in fact, I think it points to disturbing trend in the management of our city. So the self-storage analysis on page two twenty-six of tonight's packet has several telling remarks. First thing that I noticed was that a twenty eighteen study by Colliers showed that even at that time, three years ago, the Bloomington market for self-storage was becoming saturated, according to the report, and several units have opened up since then. Bloomington now has nine self-storage units with some six hundred and fifty thousand square feet of space, significantly higher than all neighboring cities with the exception of St. Louis Park. Second, while storage units provide a valuable service to the community, especially young families who have not yet migrated into single-family homes and senior citizens who are coming out of single-family homes, these facilities also provide very few employment opportunities and function at all hours of the night with people coming and going. So that's a second concern. These structures by nature are malarge and monolithic and dwarf any neighborhood buildings. Just look at Penn Avenue, south of Ninety-First Street, or American Boulevard in front of Home Depot. So is that what we want to become known for, the self-storage capital of Minnesota? I I don't think so. Third, the more storage you build, the more people from other communities will be driving in and out of our communities at all hours of the day and night. So these storage units aren't just for residents of Bloomington. There's no way for us to limit that. But it really does prove the adage of if you build it, they will come. And come they will, from all over the metro area, people that would otherwise not have any reason to be here. This taxes our roads with noise and congestion and public services in the event of accidents, traffic violations, and, you know, other other things that might affect our our public services. So what's the root cause? What's what's the main?
Mr. Clark, if I could, if I could interrupt for just a minute, Mr. Clark. So the ordinance that we're exploring tonight, that we're looking at tonight, looks at a variety of staff recommendations and planning commission recommendations that have been brought forward in terms of setback, locations, proximity to residential neighborhoods. Did you have specific comments on the ordinance itself rather than your general commentary on the 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 use, the efficacy, the the value of public of 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 storage spaces?
Well, I thought that was what the public hearing was about. That's what I'm calling in for.
No, the public hearing is about the 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 ordinance that we have in front of us tonight. And I think, I mean, the the points that you brought forward are definitely legitimate points, and they're part of the staff report. And obviously, we, I mean, I agree, we've read that, and we've we've been through that in terms of the staff. What we're looking for now is public feedback on the ordinance that's in front of us tonight. And as I said, it relates to setback, it relates to locations, it relates to whether or not we want it on Lyndale Avenue or not. Those are the questions that we're we're trying to to get at tonight.
Okay. Well, I would then say that that as far as I'm concerned and many others, that, you know, we need to continue this moratorium for another year so we can further study the issue, just like the previous caller said. And we can really start understanding these issues more because there's a lot of misunderstandings about it. Then all of a sudden, we see storage units popping up out of nowhere. And and the general impression is that it's it's too much. It's already too much now. It'll be too much in the future if we take off this moratorium and continue to to develop. So, you know, I would say that we need to stop, we need to stop all further development and continue the moratorium. So I don't think that's an option, but that needs to be an option. Continue this moratorium until June of twenty twenty-two.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, if I could, I know we have, we may have more folks, but I know that the city manager, I believe somebody else commented the council on on that same issue. When we're done with the the public hearing, I'm wondering if the city manager could speak to the the practicalities behind extending the moratorium, what's involved with that, how that interacts with state law and so on.
And I think we will do just that. As we can, as we wrap up the public hearing, we will do just that, Councilmember Coulter. Thank you for that. Ms. Wilson?
Jorgan, do we have additional callers for agenda item seven point three?
There are no other callers on the line.
All right. Thank you.
We have no additional callers. We'll, Councilmember Beloga, I see your hand up. Councilmember Beloga?
Oh, I was getting ready for a conversation.
Oh, okay, we're not quite there yet. We're just, I want to make one last call and make sure that there are no further callers on the line wishing to speak on item seven point three, the self-storage ordinance that we're discussing this evening. Ms. Wilson, can we wait one last call?
Jorgan, could you check one more time? Do we have any callers on the line?
We have the line of Mr. Clark again on the line. And Mr. Clark, to provide another comment, please press star one.
Mr. Clark, another bite at the apple, or is this a leftover from your first, the first time?
I have no further comments. Well, I do have to say, Mr. Mayor, I'm a little disappointed that I didn't get to speak about the storage units in the way that I wanted to speak on them. That was a bit limiting to be able to be limited like that.
Well, and as I said, Mr. Clark, we're, the the discussion, the public hearing tonight is specifically on the ordinance as we've as we've laid it out in the public hearing, that understand your understand your frustration and understand the points that you were making. And as I said, a lot of those points were already in our staff report. So appreciate the input, but we're trying to focus the conversation tonight on the ordinance in front of us.
Okay. Well, I have other points to make about this, so I'll call in at the next public comment then.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Wilson, is there anybody else?
Jorgan, last chance, any callers?
There are no additional comments and callers. Please continue.
Thank you.
Counsel, nobody else coming forward to speak on the public hearing on item seven point three? With that, I'd look for a motion to close this evening's public hearing.
So moves, Coulter?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Carter to close the public hearing on item seven point three. Hearing no further counsel discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing on item seven point three. Now we get into council discussion. Councilmember Beloga, and then I see Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe all of you will recall that it was last March that I brought this item up, feeling that we had too many self-storage units. And without doing something, we would have a significant number of additional applications in the future, since many of our surrounding neighboring communities ban or severely restrict the construction of these kinds of storage units. And the indications and general thoughts that I gave at that time were is how many units is appropriate for Bloomington to support the needs of our community? Our being Bloomington, not Bloomington, plus Richfield, Edina, and so on. And then asked staff to make a racial for that similar to what we do with pawn stores. With pawn stores, we say that we can have a pawn store for every fifty thousand people, I believe it is, or somewhere in that neighborhood within a community. So we have two pawn stores because we have less than a hundred thousand population. That's really the kind of thing that I believe that most of the residents of our community and myself as the champion of this moratorium are looking for. Now, I think some of the other suggestions that staff and the planning commission came up with about where they should be, where they couldn't be, are excellent. But it really has been overthought and has missed the fundamental and core value of how many units do we need to support our community? I believe that if we didn't build any more units, we probably have enough to meet the demand of our community for the next fifty or so years. As a result, I'm asking that we bring this back to staff, that they reconsider not the work that they've done, but a simplistic look at how many units we need for our community. And to make that indication and ratio. Those are my comments for the night on this topic at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, you know, I agree with what a lot, with a lot of what Councilmember Beloga just said. I I think that is something worth considering. Sorry, excuse my phone. And, you know, I I think, you know, the number that that struck out to me from this presentation was that we have enough self-storage units to serve eighteen percent of our households. And nationwide, the average is ten percent, which means that we're almost double what what the the rest of the country is. And and that, to me, suggests that we are, we are, I would say, significantly overserved by self-storage facilities. I would say, you know, in terms of some of the questions that came from the planning commission feedback, I would much prefer the five-hundred-foot buffer. I I think it's just that much more distance that that greater separation in terms of some of the things that we had talked about as far as industrial uses near residential and that kind of thing. I would also just say, you know, again, I think, you know, staff put a lot of time and effort into the Lyndale Avenue retrofit. And I I think that needs to be a complete, complete vision of its own. So my preference would be that we that we do prohibit them entirely adjacent to Lyndale Avenue. And I I think that's just the the better way to go about it. My, you know, I I think what the points that that Councilmember Beloga raised are are good ones. I I think it's, you know, it's a, it's a good question in terms of number. I would say perhaps the the number needs to be not necessarily facilities, but, you know, I don't know if it's square footage or storage unit. I don't know what you would call them, individual storage unit numbers, as opposed to just individual business numbers. But, you know, just based on what we've seen tonight, I, you know, I I certainly would be willing to support something even more restrictive than what we've talked about here. But I I I would say we, I would say we should go forward with what we have here tonight with the five-hundred-foot buffer and and nothing adjacent to Lyndale. But I I think Councilmember Beloga has raised some really excellent points on on consideration moving forward as far as what, you know, what do we want in terms of of storage units? And, you know, I I would say from my own perspective, and certainly what I've been hearing from the community, it's 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 certainly not more.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right. Well, I want to thank Mr. James. I I know you've put a lot of work and thought into this, and I appreciate the ability to give feedback in the past as well. And I do think I I also agree with Councilmember Beloga, and I think that the two things, you know, his recommendation and the work that you've done already, I feel like are both critical pieces to addressing this issue. I know I've heard from plenty of people that, you know, they're, they do not want to see another self-storage unit or facility go up in Bloomington. In fact, I just ran into somebody this weekend who I did not know, a stranger, and he asked me how I liked council, and then he told me, please don't let any more storage facilities go up. And I don't know, maybe he was paying attention to our agendas, maybe not. But so I really, you know, I echo the sentiments that Councilmember Coulter just shared. I I support the staff's recommendation of the five-hundred-foot buffer and of not allowing any new storage facilities on Lyndale. I think it's completely counterintuitive to what we're doing in the Lyndale retrofit strategy. And then I would like to know, you know, the the answer to the the question that was brought up earlier around the continuation of the moratorium. I would just like to make sure that that answer is given to the public. And then again, I do, I recommend, I I support staff's recommendation, and then I also support Councilmember Beloga's suggestion to put a cap on the, either the, I agree with Councilmember Coulter, maybe it's the number of storage units per capita. So that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Mr. Verbrugge, the question on the moratorium, could you help us with that, please?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers. So state law allows cities to adopt what's called an interim ordinance, and it's often referred to as a moratorium, to study a zoning issue without the pressure of timing that's generated by pending application. Because as councils are aware, when a an applicant comes in with a development application, we have to consider that within a specific period of time. The purpose of the moratorium or the interim ordinance is to set a period of time for the city to study an issue without the pressure of an application timeframe. So an interim ordinance can broadly prohibit a use throughout the city, but only for a year. The the state statute places a limit on the amount of time that we can have a moratorium in place. And an extension of an interim ordinance may only occur in very, very limited circumstances and pursuant to specific statutory procedures. So there, some of those are like adoption of a comp plan if you don't have one. If you need other approvals, like the Metropolitan Council or the Army Corps or the EPA. If you need one hundred and twenty days because of a court order. So it's it's really, really specific exclusions, and this wouldn't fit in any of those. So we have a very constrained timeframe that we have to process our study. So we can't continue this moratorium indefinitely.
Is that Hill clarified, Councilmember Carter? Very good. Councilmember Nelson, then Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So first of all, I I think the idea of considering a cap or a limit or something like that merits some discussion. I will say that I am hesitant about that type of approach in general. I'm not sure how effective it is to substitute the judgment to the council of staff of a city versus the overall judgment of a market and allowing them to do that. What I do think is extremely positive that we can do is take a look at where the challenges, where the problems, where the conflicts are, and work to create an appropriate set of rules and standards that mitigate those things, which I think is what staff has done here. You know, in reality, I wonder if the last two self-storage places weren't built on Penn Avenue right across from people's houses and on Lyndale on what was earlier referred to as the downtown of our community. If those had not been put there, how much of an issue this would be. I think it would still be somewhat of an issue. I think there are places that this use does not make sense. I think that I I completely agree that we probably have more than 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 we absolutely need because all of our communities are coming in and using them. So I I think it's a a good conversation to have. But in general, you know, I I believe in allowing the marketplace to work within a set of rules that protects our residents from the negative harms of a particular type of use. And, you know, I want to make sure we kind of continue to try to balance those items. With that being said, what staff put forward with their recommendation, I would support their recommendation of the five-hundred-foot buffer and and inclusion of all of Lyndale. I I I'm certainly not advocating for more storage units. I I just think that let's address why people don't want these or why we're hearing complaints and concerns. And if we can address those issues, if there are places that are appropriate, then, you know, if the marketplace wants to build more, then you know, that that may be okay. But let's address those issues that we're actually hearing.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. I I think that my colleague, Councilwoman Nelson, your question in terms of, that you asked earlier of staff, in terms of other, and I know we're out of the out of the germane of this particular item, but to look at other uses more generally. Because I think that that is a relatively large reason why folks have a have an issue with that, especially when we look at Penn Avenue. And so I guess my my question I have for staff is, how many months are we into this, this initial moratorium here? If I get clarification on that?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the moratorium was adopted. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the moratorium was adopted in June of 2020.
So we're getting pretty close to the, uh, the end of this, uh, the study here. I, I do personally think that it is worth having a look in terms of what Councilmember Nelson has put forward in terms of just general uses. And I don't know, maybe, maybe that's a different moratorium, but but I, I think there's, is some I used to studying that piece. Certainly, I'd be willing to, to look at the cap piece, but, uh, you know, there's got to be rules out there for businesses. I think, uh, Councilmember Nelson, you put that eloquently, and I won't try to repeat that. But, uh, but yeah, I, I, I certainly am supportive of what staff has put forward around the five hundred foot piece there with some standards. And I certainly think that we need to look at the standards for the rest of those uses as well that Councilmember Nelson's put forward. So if there's a way to, to continue to study those items, both that were put forward by Nelson and Beloga, I'd be open to, to, to exploring that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Just for my two cents, I, I do fully support the, the staff recommendations. I think a five hundred foot setback is most appropriate. I think keeping them off of Lindale Avenue is, is most appropriate as well, and the protections of our industrial zones, I think are, is, is very important. I, I, I'm afraid, I, I don't know that I agree with you, Councilmember Beloga, on your, on your comparison with, with the, with, with pawn shops in town. I mean, I think those are, to, to think back in, in the, the, the blue light type of or the blue law type of thinking that went into those, that, that type of ordinance and to, to limit it by population and so on, I think is limiting. And I agree with Councilmember Nelson that if, if we address the issues of having them too close to residential units, uh, if we have, if we keep them off, off of Lindale Avenue because of the work that's gone into the Lindale Avenue retrofit. And for that matter, if we maintain some control in terms of lighting, in terms of signage and that kind of thing, I think we address some of the concerns that we've talked about, we've heard from others. But if, um, if the, if the market thinks that this can, could continue, or there are reasonable places within the sixty-seven parcels still available for them as possible storage unit locations, I, I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to, to say no to that. If there's setback, as I said, the five hundred feet, if we had the lighting standards and, and so on. So I would prefer to let the market take that as opposed to, uh, to try and set a number. The other, the other possibility, and I think I brought this up at, at the last time we did talk about this, the other possibility, let's just simply prohibit storage facilities in Bloomington. And rather than trying to come up with a number to try and work our way through all of this. I mean, if, if we believe there are enough storage units within the city of Bloomington, then, then let's just say that there's enough storage units in the city of Bloomington and, and they're prohibited in, according to our zoning code. So council, where do we head from here? I think we've got, we, we've heard a few different things. I'd be interested to hear a motion going forward in terms of how we deal with this and how we end up, how we end up moving forward on this. Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, uh, I, I think we're on the same track as, if you really parse my words. And at the conclusion, I said that a couple of things that were in lockstep with your comments. And those are, is that staff did a good job on both distancing from residential and locational noise? That we have more than we can use and that the demand is coming from outside of our community. And that the population really doesn't want anymore. Population being the residents of our community. And that we probably had a fifty-year-old supply. So if we didn't want to use what you felt was an antiquated methodology of determining what a racial would be, then we should just outlaw them, and I would be just very comfortable with supporting that. And would be happy to make a motion as such. The, the difficulty with that is, is you do that and all those sites now become non-conformal.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just two quick points on that, and I appreciate the suggestion, Mayor, and the comments of Councilmember Beloga on it. I would actually be open to considering that. I would prefer not to do that tonight until we gave staff a chance to sort of put together a report like we normally get, uh, go through that, think about it and and digest it and then be able to make that decision. But I would be open to taking a look at that option. If that is, if there's a majority of people wanting to do that, I, you know, again, in general, I would, you know, I did, I'm hesitant to tell people what to do with their own property, but I, I do respect that, that there's a strong sentiment along these lines, and it may be a much easier approach for us to do it that way.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, um, I think Councilmember Nelson said a lot of what I was going to say. I, I would be inclined to support an approach that, that Councilmember Beloga outlined. Because I, I think it does get, you know, like I said earlier, at the issue that we are essentially percentage-wise almost doubly served by storage facilities in the city of Bloomington. So I, but I, I agree with Councilmember Nelson that, that it's the kind of thing that I, I think we would need to study, that we would need to be able to look at language and, and ask questions of, of staff and, and discuss it as a council. So I, I, I would, I would much prefer we, we have some opportunity to, to look at it and, and think about it more, more fully before making any concrete decisions like that.
Councilmember Lohman.
So in terms of that, I guess my concern, my question would be from a timeline standpoint, so we've got June as our deadline, is that something staff can, can get done in that timeframe?
Mr. Verbrugge.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I think the answer is yes. What we would need to do, though, is have an ordinance if the council's desire was to to not allow this type of facility. We would have to do an ordinance that would strike those sections from our zoning code. So that would take a little bit of work. I think that what would be best is to, um, we could do two things. We could adopt this and return, which would at least put the the parameters in effect, which are likely to limit any development anyway. I think Mr. James can probably answer a question based on his research about how likely it is for a self-storage facility to populate the areas that remain based on the parameters that have already been suggested. And even further, the likelihood that that would happen in a short period of time, I think it's quite narrow. Or we could continue to a date certain and then come back with an alternative motion or ordinance for consideration. I think the city attorney probably has some thoughts as well.
Ms. Manderscheid, thoughts on this?
Yeah, Mayor and members, thank you. You know, the time required to put in place any sort of a subsequent ordinance that isn't currently before the body tonight is going to take some time. There's a fair amount of process required. We need to renotice. We need to do some drafting again, run it through the various steps that are required and that, and that's going to take us, you know, probably sixteen to ninety days. And, and, and the clock has ticked in. We could get started on that, but in the interim period of time here, the moratorium would stay in place. However, that's sort of a we have a sort of status quo then, if we're, if we're not doing anything tonight. However, it, this does take us quite a bit of the way. So if the council is inclined to what the city manager just indicated, you could have put this in place right now and create sort of a a partial addressing of the, of the concerns that you've, that were identified during the study, as well as the ones that you've identified tonight. And then you would have something in place in the event we couldn't get the next part of the process done before June.
So would we have till the end of June? Because I'm only counting sixty days right here, and I've, I've got, if, is it beginning of June or the end of June that we did this moratorium?
Mayor members, I believe that it was June twenty-second, uh, at twenty twenty, the, uh, one-year moratorium started.
Okay. So yeah, I mean, that's, that's not quite ninety days, right? So and I guess what I'm, I'm hearing from the rest of my colleagues is that, because it's theoretically possible that if we were to pass the, the the first recommendation from staff, that someone could put in an application for a for storage. Is that, is that my understanding? If we were to pass that tonight?
Mayor members, that is correct. Someone could put in an application. I believe that, you know, the number of spaces that are available is not, would be then sixty-seven as opposed to what we currently have. And as city manager mentioned, perhaps Sean could address to the, to the extent that he's comfortable doing so, the likelihood, based on what he learned during the moratorium studies, that some of these parcels may maybe more likely or unlikely to, to develop into self-storage.
So why don't we ask that question of Mr. James, and then let's go to Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Martin. Mr. James?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, councilmembers. Um, you know, as planning staff, we get calls periodically about, from interested parties. It's difficult to say how, how far along they are down the road with planning. But even if they were to locate a site, you know, it'd take months to, to pull together a feasible site plan. Now, it's not out of the realm of possibility that an application could be submitted, but you know, with the sites shown on the map here, it's pretty limited from what we allow today. So, you know, that much less likely that we would get an application.
Thank you, Mr. James. Uh, Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick procedural question. Is it possible to extend an interim moratorium or interim ordinance, a moratorium? Is that at all a possibility for even a short period of time?
Mr. Verbrugge.
Referring back to the comments I made earlier, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, Councilmembers Nelson, I don't believe that this situation applies to what would allow us to extend, but I think that's probably city attorney who's better to answer that question.
Ms. Manderscheid, do we have any ability to extend this even for thirty or sixty days?
You know, Mayor members, we could look into that to see if any of those specific exceptions apply. For example, if if any of the subsequent ideas that have been articulated tonight might in some way trigger a met council review. I don't know that off the top of my hands, off the top of my head without doing some additional research. But typically, it's the one year is, is the timeframe under which you have to complete the work and take the necessary next steps.
Councilmember Nelson, anything further?
No, thank you, Mayor. I'm good.
Councilmember Nelson, uh, Councilmember Martin.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor. Um, just real quickly, I guess, kind of where my head is at on this one. I feel like the, the purpose of the ordinance was kind of in the immediate term to address the injurious nature of some of these facilities on neighboring residential properties. Obviously, the, the towering, high-mass structures, the blazing lights of these kind of floor-wide windows. And I, I do appreciate staff's work, the recommendations you put forward, because I think it largely addresses a, a lot of those. So kind of in the short term here, I'd be comfortable with forward, uh, passing what staff has recommended tonight. I especially appreciate getting rid of a lot of Lindale, considering the conversation we had an hour ago. In the medium term, I also appreciate this is likely going to prohibit most of this development anyway. And if we do happen on an outside chance to get an application, it's going to be in an area, again, with way lower impact to surrounding residential uses. And just kind of finally, just to, to not be kind of kicking things out, making the, the perfect enemy of the good a little bit and kind of kicking items out and filling up future agendas, maybe. It, it would be nice from the, the public conversation side of this to, it sounds like we had a lot of agreement that this is heading in the right direction. Move forward on this tonight and then allow the public conversation in a next phase to be, okay, here is our, our understanding of the role of these facilities, the location of these facilities as a council. Now we're going to discuss taking a further step then of, say, a complete prohibition. So, yeah, I, I, I've got enough to, to say this is heading in the right direction. Set public expectation for the next conversation is going to be, and give staff some more breathing room to, to be able to work on this and get us more information. So.
I think that's a good summary, Councilmember Martin. I, I, and I would tend to agree with you. I think, yes, trying not to let the perfect get in the way of the good. I think this, what we have tonight in front of us will, as we've heard from Mr. James, and I think just logically, I think it will obviously severely limits where these facilities could go. It's unlikely that somebody would move forward with one. And if they did, they would be in an area that wouldn't be impacting residential or, or, um, high-density areas that we were, we were trying to avoid in the first place. And so I, I do think if, if we pass this tonight and then instructed staff to bring back this next step in this conversation, do we want to look at limiting or completely eliminating any new public, um, storage facilities in, in the city of Bloomington? I think that would be a reasonable step forward and could get us moving in the direction that I'm hearing, as, as Councilmember Martin said, that I'm hearing from a, a majority, I think, of the folks on the council this evening. I can't tell which are new hands or old hands. I see Councilmember Beloga's hand, you've had it up, Jack, or is that existing or is that a new hand?
That's new.
Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you. We have seventy-five days between now and the end of the moratorium, more or less. And what, uh, what I hear us discussing is, is settling for what we have today, even though it may not be what we think is best for our community, doing what's expedient. And I, I always feel uncomfortable with the expedient because of long-term. I've, I've got, I've seen expedient come to fruition in the wrong way, way too many times. The city attorney has opined that it takes ninety days. And I would say that ask our city manager if we can par a little bit of time off of that by making this a priority item so that we handle it one time. Whatever the results may be, but let's, uh, let's do what is what we think is in the best interest of of the community. I, I, in any event, don't see a reason tonight why we have to lift the moratorium. It's there until June twenty-second, irrespective of what we do on what's before us tonight. I, I see no value in releasing the moratorium until June twenty-second.
Councilmember Lohman, is that a, a new hand or an old hand, Wayne?
It's a new hand. I, I'd like to
Councilmember Lohman and then Councilmember Coulter.
So I guess, um, um, I, I don't want to prevent anybody else from, from doing anything, but I'd be happy to, to put a motion forward to see if there's enough support out there to continue this to a date certain, which would probably be, we have a meeting on June twenty-first?
Would, is, we do, I think, is, is that a, a formal motion?
Yeah, oh, unless I gotta
Standby, we don't have one on the twenty-first. I know we don't. I think it's the fourteen.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I believe that June twenty-first is the one Monday in June. We don't have a meeting scheduled.
Uh, which also creates a different, creates a different problem. It cuts out on seventy-five days, so I'll, I'll go with June fourteenth. I don't know if there's a second out there. If there's not a second, then I'll be happy to move the other motion.
I'll second that.
So we've got a motion by Councilmember Lohman, a second by Councilmember Beloga to, to continue this until June fourteenth, this item. I see Councilmember Coulter with his hand up. Councilmember Coulter?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm a little frustrated that things kind of got ahead of me. I wish I had a chance to speak a little bit ago. I I hear what my colleagues are saying. I, I hear what my colleagues are saying, and I actually don't disagree with it. I guess my question is, if we are, if we continue this to the fourteenth, I, what, what is the discussion we would be having on the fourteenth? We would be, we would be discussing potentially it's some, some kind of, of limit or cap or, or whatever you want to call it on self-storage facilities. My problem is that it, it sounds a little bit like we're presuming the outcome of that discussion. It, it sounds like, because if, if we decide that's not the route we want to go, and, and, you know, while I said I would be inclined to support that, I would need to know more information, then are we adopting this, this ordinance and, and these standards on the fourteenth as well? It, it seems to me that that, that clouds the issue a bit. I, I, I mean, I, like I said earlier, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to, to consider that, but I, I, this just seems like we're, we're getting out in front of our skis a bit. I think my, my preference would be to adopt the standards that we have here tonight. And, you know, whether, whether or not we lift the moratorium, that I, you know, I could support, I, I could support not lifting the mori- moratorium tonight. I think that, that would be fine. But I, I think, you know, as you said earlier, Mayor, I think we should talk about, we should focus on the ordinance that we have in front of us tonight. And, you know, if we, if we want to have a future discussion, one, one advantage to adopting these standards tonight is that we have something in place, once the moratorium expires, once, uh, you know, if we decide not to go in the direction of some other cap or something else, we have something in place and don't have to come back to it. I just, you know, I'm, I'm all for addressing community concerns. I'm all for, you know, doing what we really say we want to do, but I think we need to do it in a, in a thoughtful way and, and pushing something like this and saying, you know, we'll, we'll just figure it out as we go. I'm just really, really not comfortable with that. So, you know, I guess that's, I didn't really make a, a point there, but I just, I think we need to be thoughtful about this, and I'm concerned that we're not doing that.
Mr. Verbrugge, a question. If this ordinance is adopted, does that automatically end the moratorium?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, the, the motion, uh, adopting this ordinance does end the moratorium. I think the question's better directed at the City Attorney if we can amend the motion to keep the moratorium in place, uh, through June twenty-first, uh, even if we adopt this, this action.
Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, uh, the challenge that we have before us is that the ordinance tonight, the challenge we have before us tonight, is that the ordinance in the packet on page two-two-two, removes the moratorium language, um, from, from the code. And so, um, we would need to figure out a way, um, to be, make it clear that that is not what's happening by adopting this ordinance. That's in the packet on page two-two-two. Similarly, the resolution of summary publication, you know, does the same thing. So, um-
Well, as, Ms. Manderscheid, as I look at the staff recommended motion in front of us, the last line is, "And to remove the moratorium on self-storage facilities." If we simply took that out of the motion, uh, and then made the adjustments as, as appropriate within, uh, the, within the ordinance, would that do the trick?
Uh, it's not just the motion, Mayor, it's the fact that the actual ordinance is, is what's, is what's doing that. Um, so if you adopt the ordinance that's in the packet, that will, that will affect, effectively, uh, remove the moratorium from the city code as well. You know, it probably is best, if you want to keep the moratorium in place, to ask us to bring this back, um, with a fresh ordinance for you all to adopt, to act on, um, at the subsequent public, or at the subsequent, um, City Council meeting, that we would have, um, more clear document for you all to take action on. If you're, if you would like to act tonight, I would probably be inclined to generate that motion language for you all so that it's clear that, um, that section twelve point, or excuse me, twenty-one point five oh five is not being removed. Again, you know, the other challenge that we have before you is that we've conducted the study and completed the study, and we've held the scheduled public hearing, so we need to be mindful that the next step is then the removal of that moratorium. So unless we're continuing to study this, um, and it sounds to me like there is a desire to study some additional aspects of moving forward, perhaps it makes sense to not, um, to not remove that moratorium tonight. But, um, I think we need some clarity from the, from the council as to what our next steps are from the staff perspective, because I'm hearing a couple, a couple of different things.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, my, the City Attorney actually answered my, my first question, which was related to just the motion and, and saying that we would not amend, uh, section, uh, twenty-one point five oh five. Um, I guess my, my other question for the City Attorney would be, I mean, you know, I, it, obviously, we've discussed the, the legal reasons why we could or could not extend the moratorium, but, I mean, we adopted the moratorium on June, I think it was June twenty-second for one year. So, I, I, I guess my question is, does, I mean, I know it's difficult to, to sort of infer intent from the law, but, but, you know, knowing perhaps that this may require more research. What, I mean, what does the law say on that? I mean, the law, it sounds to me, it doesn't sound like the law says, well, once you, you know, get past the reason for adopting the moratorium, it expires. I mean, it seems to me the law is, you adopt the moratorium for one year, and that's how long the moratorium is in place. So, um, I, I guess if you can sort of understand what I'm asking here, what, what is the, the, the mechanism by which the moratorium would be ending?
Mayor?
Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, um, this was addressed in our code, um, and it's in the ordinance on page two-two-three. It talks about, um, two different scenarios. One is if the council does nothing, the moratorium ends after the one-year period from its effective date. Um, in the alternative, the other option is that the, the study is, is, uh, completed, and then, um, the official controls are amended, um, in keeping with the conclusion and results of that study, and then the moratorium ends. It's in section three, um, duration. So I think that if you want us to do more work on this, you'll need to find that the, the, that the requisite study is not complete, and that you want us to do some more evaluation and bring back, uh, a subsequent action for your consideration. And, for example, that could be, um, further limiting of the geography based on the discussion this evening. It could be additional analysis and review of the official controls. Um, it could be, um, a variety of things, um, that would be, uh, consistent with the discussion or otherwise achieve, um, what we hear you all discussing during the council meeting this evening.
So Ms. Manderscheid, just, if you could repeat that one more time, your, your point about continuing the, the study, which would then continue the moratorium?
Uh, Mayor members, so, so I guess what my, I'm trying to convey is that the law contemplates that, once the study, once the official actions have been taken by the council, the moratorium ends. Um, because the, the taking of action by the council, uh, is the statement that you all have studied the issue and you have reached these, this conclusion that these official controls are the, are what is needed. If you all have not reached that conclusion, um, that you want additional study, uh, it would be our recommendation that you ask us to continue to hold that moratorium open, um, and continue to do that work and bring that back to you, um, at a subsequent meeting. Uh, I will add that if, um, the public notice has gone out, obviously, for the hearings for, both the, um, the public, uh, Planning Commission hearings as well as the hearing this evening, there was specific language about what was advertised for that public hearing. And as we've mentioned, there is a process related to it, um, to putting all of those notices together and the public hearing publications and all the rest. It takes about ninety days to get through that process. It doesn't appear to me that we have that amount of time. So the challenge is, what are we going to do at this juncture? So, um, I hear that you want to keep the moratorium in place, uh, until the end of that year period. I just struggle with the practicality of that approach. If we're going to be changing things, um, you know, and bumping that way into the end of, into that year period, because we're going to run out of days.
All right, thank you.
I know there's a lot of new moving parts there.
There are, yes.
Uh, the challenge, you know, is the, is the clock, but also to, um, you know, how do we, um, I mean, I'd like, I'd like to be able to get you to a place where you could adopt this tonight, but keep the moratorium in place until June. I just don't know that that's practically possible. Unless, unless, for example, I'm thinking out loud here, um, unless, for example, you find that this is, uh, partially addresses, that these official controls partially address your, um, concerns, um, that you, that were identified, um, during the study, during the moratorium, and that you want additional official controls adopted, and you want the moratorium to stay in place and for additional study to continue, and for us to bring you back something more. I think that that, um, still is going to be a challenge to accomplish within those ninety days. So, um, I guess, uh, to summarize, it would be best for you all to continue this and give us a little bit more time to address what we've heard tonight and, um, keep the moratorium in place. So, for example, continuing it, postponing it for a couple of weeks to get us, um, the time to put together, um, a revised, uh, ordinance for your consideration. And I, and I'd also defer to Glenn and Megan and Sean and others who have been involved in this more closely to, to speak to the specific timelines and procedures. I've looked at the public hearing notice, and we have some space in that, um, but, you know, there are limits and there are requirements, um, in that law as well.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Lohman, Councilmember Nelson, and Councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Lohman?
So then, um, I, I guess, uh, I wonder if, if the, uh, secondar of my motion would be open to moving, uh, uh, this, continuing it to, uh, um, the, the first, uh, it's our first meeting in May, is it the tenth? Or is that enough time for staff to get something back to us?
I believe our first meeting in May would be, is the third, is it not? Yeah, it's the third.
I guess my question would be, is that enough time for staff to, to get something together?
Mr. Verbrugge, thoughts?
Um, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I, I would need direction on what it is I'm getting together, bring back. If, if we're tabling this consideration and bringing it back on May third, uh, with some, uh, additional language for continuing the moratorium through June, uh, while the other work, uh, begins, I think the answer to that is yes. Uh, if it's, if it's bringing back information, um, just related to the initial motion, which I think is still on the table, I think that's not enough time. So I, I suppose I need more clarification, make sure I'm responding to the right question.
Yeah. I think, um, uh, Manager, I think the first thing that you mentioned is, I think, when I, that's what I'm hearing, uh, that, uh, staff is recommending that we can kind of pass some part of this and, uh, uh, and then, uh, continue the rest of the moratorium, uh, up through June, uh, to the end of that particular time. And so I guess what my question would be first, before I, uh, change my motion, uh, would my secondar be open to doing something like that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, as the secondar, I have a question of staff, uh, before I can answer, uh, the question of, uh, would I amend the second on, uh, Councilmember Lohman's, uh, motion?
Please.
And my question is, I understood the City Attorney to say that if the study isn't complete, you can keep the moratorium open in order to complete the study.
And that is what I understood as well.
So, then I heard, but it ends at June twenty-second, which is a complete contradiction. So I'm, I'm a little more than confused as to which it is.
Well, I, I think we can keep the study open, or we can maintain the moratorium as, as long as we keep the study open, but one way or another, that year deadline is the year deadline for the end of the moratorium.
So it's, it's a year irrespective of whether the study-
That, that's correct. Yep. Yep, the three hundred and sixty-five days, I don't think, it, it doesn't matter if you're done with your study or not, I think, unless you've got the extreme extenuating circumstances that Mr. Verbrugge brought up earlier, uh, the year stands.
Which, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, the City Attorney will check to make sure that none of those other provisions would apply, yeah, if, in the intervening timeframe.
Okay.
Mayor, I guess what I'm trying to say here, uh, is that I think regardless of what we do, um, staff is going to need to have a look at this. So I, I wonder if it's prudent for us to continue with this to our next meeting, or whenever it's enough time for staff to look at this, to, to give us a clear, uh, delineation in terms of what we can do around this, uh, so we can keep moving with our agenda. I'm just concerned that, uh, we're getting caught on this.
No, I, I think you're right, and I think the, it was, you had asked the question of your, your secondar, Councilmember Beloga, if you'd be amenable to, to adjusting your motion to, I think, the May third meeting as opposed to the June fourteenth meeting.
I, uh, I am fine with that.
So the revised motion right now is to table this or to continue this until our May third meeting, which would give staff enough time to work on the, uh, the particulars and, and to figure out the details, maybe rewrite the, the ordinance in such a way that meets the discussion that we're having tonight.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and-
We're clear on that?
I think that's understood. It, I just will double-check with the City Attorney before I, uh, say for sure.
Ms. Manderscheid? Is that what you understood?
Yeah, Mayor members, I understand this to be, uh, a motion to continue this matter until May third. Um, again, we won't have a public hearing on May third. That public hearing has been open and closed this evening. If we find that there needs to be any subsequent process related to that, we'll definitely make that known as soon as possible. And we'll additionally check on any sort of continuations related to, um, extenuating circumstances.
Thank you. Still see hands from Councilmembers Nelson, Coulter, and Martin. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the clarification of everything. So, um, I support this, uh, action to get some additional information before we act. One other piece that I would, um, have a question about is I know we have some control on the effective date of an ordinance, and I'm wondering if, um, to extend the time period of this current moratorium as long as possible, we can set that effective date June twenty-second so that the moratorium, if necessary, would end at that point, um, and that ordinance would go into effect? If that would be, uh, a way of utilizing that entire time period?
Uh, Mayor members, um, we'd be happy to look into that.
All right. One more thing from Ms. Manderscheid to look at. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, at this point, I'm just, could I, I would just like some clarification on what, what all will staff be bringing back to us on May third? What is, what is the discussion that we will be having on the third? Because I, I'm admittedly just a little bit confused about what, what the purpose of continue, of the motion to continue is.
Ms. Manderscheid, uh, can you put this in a nutshell for us?
Uh, Mayor and members, I think it might be, I think I would prefer that Councilmember Lohman, um, did that. I'm not perfectly clear myself. I mean, I have a list of things that we're working on, but I, I'm not sure what else, um, is expected of us for May third.
Be happy to do that. Thank you, Mayor. I think the crux of what we're trying to do is, uh, what I heard, uh, the City Attorney say is that, um, if, if we're, the basic way that this is set up is that if we pass this tonight, the moratorium should end. Uh, this would give staff the opportunity and the time, uh, to be able to, uh, explore and, uh, consider, uh, if there's a way for us to continue the moratorium through the end of, uh, June, uh, for those, those council members that want to continue to study. And that would allow us to kind of do that, so we're not coming back, because it's already, it's also written inside the ordinance. And so I, I personally feel uncomfortable, uh, tonight, uh, just kind of pushing this through and, and, uh, trying to pull that out of the ordinance and also, uh, just pulling it out of the motion. So this gives staff the opportunity to uh primarily to have that opportunity to look to see if there's a way to kind of do that, so that makes sense. Uh, to to be able to achieve that. In addition to that, I think staff has written down some other questions. Uh, that councilmembers would like to to explore. I know Councilmember Nelson put forward a number of uh uh questions. Um, I think uh you uh Councilmember uh Coulter has also put some things forward um as well. You had some questions around. And then also uh uh Councilmember Beloga around with the the cap uh uh piece. So hopefully that's a good summary of why we're doing this, but the primary reason why I'm trying to do this, one is to get us moving on tonight's agenda. Uh, and two, uh so that we uh have a real clean uh uh delineation of um uh with this particular motion. Um, I'm happy to do either way. I don't, I really, I just want to get us moving, folks.
No, that's that's really helpful. I I I just, I think a lot of things were being thrown around and it wasn't clear to me what the what the intended breadth of the conversation that we'd be having on the third. Was so that's that's helpful and I'm I I will support this. Thank you.
And um Ms. Mandershead, are you're clear now?
Mayor members, I am. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just real briefly, uh just kind of in general, I know this, it would be helpful for me. I I understand where my colleagues are coming from with their concerns, areas uh that they may want to see tweaked or just kind of using nuclear options and going for full prohibitions. I guess just i- in terms of being able to most effectively debate these, um try and limit public frustration with some of these conversations. It would just be terrific um i- if folks on the council are seeing. This work proceeding and getting updates and stuff like one weekly and reading planning commission meetings, meeting minutes. And over the months and months that staff is working on this and sinking a lot of time into it. If you have big changes or are disappointed with the direction it's heading, it feels like every third or fourth meeting now at the eleventh hour. Um, we come up with good ideas that shouldn't be explored, um but really put staff in a bind, uh leaves the public confused about where the conversation may be heading. Um, I'll I'll support this tonight, but I could absolutely understand why folks watching these meetings might be confused or frustrated. Um, not knowing why we have a policy initiative at the end of meetings, uh if it's not going to be to say, hey, can we. Tweak where we're heading on some of this stuff before it comes in for a landing, so I appreciate the concerns that have been raised, but um. I don't know if if this is saving us much time so much as it's sandbagging a meeting a month from now.
So we do have a motion on the table, a motion and a second. To continue this to our May third meeting with the direction to staff. That I won't try and repeat, but I think that we've got on tape, so at least we can come back to it with uh what the intent of the 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 revisions or what we're looking for on May third. Is that is that understood?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, my understanding is the motion on the table is to continue this item to May third. And I think the direction from council is understood, but the main gist is continuing the motion to May third or continuing the item to May third.
Council, is everybody clear on that? And clear on what we're doing right now? Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero, so we'll take this back up again on May third. And consider some of the issues that have been brought up, some of the questions, the possibilities, and look to um look to. Make this a a a bit different than what it is now, I think, but to make it more uh in line of what the council is thinking, I think, and what the council goals and objectives here are on this. So, but thank you, uh thanks to the staff for bringing this forward and and moving this discussion along. I know this has been a. Um, this has been a long discussion. It obviously it's been, we're pushing a year now on the moratorium and we started this discussion beforehand, so appreciate your efforts on this. With that, let's move on on the agenda. Item seven point four, which is a resolution affirming the emergency actions undertaken by the city manager. And we have done this in the past with uh the city's emergency operations plan and pandemic response uh pandemic response plan. Authorized and in place. Uh, we do have portions that uh uh we do have to approve according to the plan. Uh, Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. The resolution that's before you, as the mayor explained, is just uh having the council affirm actions that are taken under our emergency order. And we have two items that are listed uh this evening. Uh, city manager took the following emergency actions, uh extending the employees COVID nineteen leave program and COVID nineteen family medical leave act program availability. Until June thirty of twenty twenty-one. Uh, real quickly, this is. Uh, this is a leave program that was initiated by the federal government as part of the original CARES Act in March of twenty twenty. It uh expired at the federal level at the end of twenty twenty. Uh, we made a decision uh locally that for employees who had not utilized that federally. Uh, uh granted benefit, that we were going to leave that possibility open. We did have a. A number of employees that did use that time. Uh, the time uh remains through June thirtieth by this action for our other employees uh who have not used it. And then the uh second action is just continued closure of our city facilities to the public except for uh on an an appointment only basis. And uh just going back to the presentation this evening from Dr. Kelly. With our monthly COVID nineteen update and check-in. Uh, as was forecast back at the end of February and early March, when we knew that the variants were taking hold. Uh, the public health folks um wisely projected that we're going to see an uptick, and here we are seeing an uptick. So uh while we're having an acceleration of cases, again, positive cases. Uh, we don't think it's wise to uh open our facilities back up until uh we see that there is. Uh, some better management on the variant acceleration and wider vaccination rates uh taking hold. I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Council, any questions of Mr. Verbrugge? And I'm afraid you are exactly right. We did, we hear, we heard the predictions that the uptick was going to take place and now we're seeing it. And I think to to maintain our very cautious manner right now, I think is the most logical and and reasonable way to move forward. Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, if there are any questions that we have, then make a motion for this.
Council, last call. Any questions or comments on this one? Councilmember Loman.
Mayor, be happy to move a a approval of a resolution uh ratifying and affirming the adopting actions. Taken by the city manager under the authority stated in resol- in the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to affirm the emergency actions undertaken by the city manager. Hearing no further, council discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman? Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Hopefully, we won't have to do many more of these. Hopefully, we can get to the other side of this and we'll be able to not have this on the agenda soon, but uh for now, this is the reality that we're in. Let's move to item eight on our agenda, our organizational business and item eight point one, which is a stormwater pond aeration ordinance discussion. And as I mentioned at the top of the uh the meeting, this is uh this is basically a study, a a study session item. We're we're going to be hearing the staff report. We're going to be discussing it among the uh city council. We won't be taking public hearing on this. This will come back eventually to us as part of a public hearing. We will talk about that ultimately. But as of as of right now, this is an internal discussion between staff and council.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to release the operator for the evening then?
If you could, please.
Jergen, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Hi, this is Donna. I'm taking over um Jergen now.
All right, we're actually all done with the call-in portion of our meeting tonight, so you can go ahead and disconnect the line. We appreciate the assistance.
All right, thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Apologize for that, Ms. Wilson. I got wrapped up in the discussion and didn't think to do that. I apologize. So item eight point one, our stormwater pond aeration ordinance discussion. Brian Guedel is here to help us through this. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, and it looks like the presentation is up and running, so very well.
Excellent. All right, well, we'll get started then. So um as you know, I'm here to discuss uh some of the our recent work regarding the stormwater aeration permit. Um, as you may recall, we um were at a public hearing back in November regarding this item. Um, ultimately, I was tabled at that time and staff was provided direction to uh explore the existing ordinance. And respond to concerns raised at the hearing as well as other concerns known to staff. And so um I've got uh quite a bit of information to um to cover tonight, so I'm gonna um go ahead and get started. But you know, within the within the um uh. The the information provided, uh you know, some draft ordinance language was in there along with a few policy updates as well as um some of the concerns known to staff. So um surface aeration um or aeration in general, I guess in its most elementary form, is just simply adding oxygen to the water. Um, it's typically provided through um either surface agitators like like a floating fountain or or a bottom-based system like a bubbler that releases oxygen. Near the bottom of the um near the bottom of the pond, um causing that water on the bottom to circulate with the upper water, um helping to disrupt stratification within the water column. Um, in the natural environment, aeration is most often used in the winter to to prevent uh winter fish kills. Um, however, it's also used in uh wastewater treatment um to keep solids in suspension. And it's also used in potable water treatment for uh taste and odor issues. Um, so I I think it's important to note that in both wastewater and potable water, uh these systems are typically uh much more turbulent. Um, than what we see uh in the naturals, in in a more natural setting. Um, so the existing ordinance was implemented in the spring of twenty eleven, which allowed ponds uh on private property. Um, the ability to install uh removable aeration equipment, providing that the abutting property owners agreed to pay for it and be responsible for it. Um, at that time, the 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 council, uh which we established last time, included nobody uh currently on the council. Um, further concluded that aeration equipment uh would not be uh installed on publicly owned properties, simply allowing nature to take its course on those ponds. So in general, the adopted ordinance and policy established the three guidelines uh that you see on the screen here. So under the current system, um approximately forty-four percent of the ponds that we have are are allowed to have aeration. And and about fifty-six percent of them, uh aeration is currently prohibited. Um, so there is uh some public interest in providing aeration on a on a publicly owned pond. And at the time that we were approached, uh that staff was approached with that proposal. Um, the the group pointed out a conflict between the ordinance and the policy. So basically, the ordinance stating that aeration is allowable on public ponds. Uh, the ordinance stating that, and while the policy kind of states the opposite. And so as staff researched that um researched that issue, I had found that the ordinance was incorrect. And that it needed to be amended in order to capsule capture the uh council's original intent. Think. Yeah, so um moving on to some of the comments that uh that we um that we discussed back in November. Um, I, you know, we spent a lot of time around the definition regarding the private institutional property and and some of the confusion that 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 this caused and how it could be implemented. Um, as a reminder, this term was implemented uh in the original ordinance because at the time of adoption, the uh the pond outside city hall already had a floating fountain in it. And so um at this point, staff is just simply proposing to delete um delete the reference to institutional property as you see on the screen. Long-term maintenance uh was also discussed. Um, so that conversation was focused around, you know, what happens if a neighborhood group falls apart or or just otherwise generally becomes disinterested. Um, in the in the project and um so the ordinance and the permit uh that that we have are are clear that maintenance and removal are are the responsibility of of the group. Uh, but I think the reality of the situation is that if the system becomes abandoned. Um, and the and the group, you know, either falls apart or or becomes uninterested. Uh, it's likely that the responsibility uh will will fall on the city as as the property owner. Um, city like city-related maintenance activity was also something that we discussed. And in general, stormwater ponds can can roughly be said to have a life expectancy um about thirty years. Um, this varies greatly uh depending on the the watershed and and many other variables. Um, I guess the the important message is that um overall, you know, major maintenance um on 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 these stormwater ponds that it that's performed by the city is is typically planned well in advance. Um, and so appropriate notice um can be provided. Um, in the rare instances of of an emergency coordination, um it's most likely that that the city would just need to work around the aeration equipment. Um, because depending on what kind of emergency it it is, um you know, neighborhoods may have uh better things to worry about than than the aeration in their pond. Um, in in March, we also um attended the sustainability commission and discussed this uh discussed this topic with them. Um, and the commission uh ultimately voted to approve a motion uh supporting uh aeration in public ponds. Um, to further research efforts and provide educational opportunities. Um, they uh we we had a fairly robust conversation regarding some of the local um ongoing research that's being done right now by the University of Minnesota and and many other. Um, collaborators and partners um around around stormwater ponds. And there there are just a lot of unanswered questions um kind of surrounding surrounding the surrounding the management and and. Um, some of the assumptions that we had originally made on some of these. Um, so you know, along those same lines, the commission acknowledged that it takes time to develop trends in water quality and that, you know, one or two years of a success or failure. May not be indicative of the actual impact, and so uh the commission recommended that staff reevaluate. Um, or revisit this in in five years to evaluate uh impacts resulting from aeration. Um, equity was also a topic of concern raised at both uh the November council meeting and and as well as the sustainability commission meeting. Um, overall, I think the question was whether or not the city uh is operating equitably uh by allowing some ponds to have aeration, but not in others. Um, the sustainability commission provided us a uh strong recommendation that the city move forward with a pilot project. Uh, to install aeration on one or two uh one or two of the ponds in economically challenged areas that may not otherwise be able to participate. And so uh we went back and took a look at uh Minnesota Pollution Control Agency's uh environmental justice areas of concern. Uh, which are the areas highlighted in green on the map. So within these um environmental justice areas of concern, there are two uh publicly owned ponds. Where a city-sponsored uh aeration pilot pilot project could be implemented. Uh, the first one is Smith Park Pond, which is up uh off American Boulevard near Chicago. And the other is Wright's Lake, which is near eighty-sixth street and and Old Cedar. Um, Smith Park Pond is is not a real good candidate due to its depth. Uh, it was. Uh reshaped and and reconfigured um in the early two thousands, and it's about sixteen feet deep at its deepest point. Um, there's a fishing pier out there and also a local um remote control boat club that uses the pond for racing their boats around. Um, Wright's Lake is is a little bit more in line with um with some of our typical stormwater ponds. It it is quite a bit larger than than a lot of them. Um, and again, Wright's Lake was excavated in uh twenty eleven and twenty twelve, uh removing over twenty-five thousand yards of accumulated sediments. Um, however, the hydrology is, you know, very dependent on storm sewer inflows. And um and the contributing watershed is about eleven hundred acres. Um, so the the surface area of Wright's Lake is is just a little bit more than four acres. And so um so an aeration system would be fairly extensive um to to operate appropriately on here. Uh, we're estimating that it would cost about fifty thousand dollars for the initial uh equipment costs as well as um annual cost for operation. A ma- uh maintenance and then monitoring um that program on Wright's Lake for a period of five years. Um, it's also, um, I think it's also reasonable to think that there could potentially be some grant funding available to help offset some of this cost. Um, so if this was, you know, something that was desired by council, staff could certainly work on getting a more refined project proposal together. Uh, in an effort to either uh move forward with construction or at least have a a uh a well-thought-out proposal that would. or at least have a, a, uh, a well-thought-out proposal that would, uh, qualify for some grant funding should it become available. Uh, managing liability was a, uh, a topic we spent a lot of time on. We, we looked at, um, considering, we looked at a waiver and, and also requiring, uh, one million dollars of liability insurance. Um, at this point, staff's preference is to proceed with the waiver. Um, we look at aeration activity as being considered, um, a pretty low-risk activity. Um, however, it's, it's important to understand that, that a waiver offers, um, less protection than insurance. So through the permitting process, um, you know, the property owners indemnify the city and, and assume the risk if something goes wrong. The insurance comes with, uh, an approximately three hundred dollar a year cost, while the waiver has no cost, no cost associated with it. That said, the waiver is only as good as the coverage of the, of the property owners or what they have available. And so if, if something were to happen, um, and legal action was pursued, the property owner's personal assets could potentially be at risk. And so a, a waiver is essentially a promise, um, by the property owners to indemnify the city. Um, however, it's staff's opinion that, um, as the property owner, the city will also be at risk and likely named as party in, in any legal action. Moving on to some of the, um, updates, uh, so, um, you know, the details of the updates are, are included in the staff report, but some of the more significant changes include, um, as we talked about earlier, sixteen oh-three, the removal of the institutional property definition. Sixteen eleven A clarifies that both public and private ponds require permitting. Um, staff is also proposing to delete, uh, existing stormwater pond aeration policy and procedure. When we went and reviewed these documents, they were pretty repetitive to what is already being said in the ordinance and the permit and had a tendency to just cause confusion. Um, sixteen eleven, we are proposing to reduce the number of abutting property owners needing to agree to aeration from one hundred percent to seventy-five percent. And then we'd also add a clause to provide the ability for a, aeration in public ponds where a permit applicant agrees to coordinate, uh, research efforts. Staff is proposing a hundred and fifty dollar fee for the initial permit, uh, where previously this, uh, was a no-cost permit. Um, the permit, uh, is, is, needs to be renewed after the first year of operation, at which point the permit can then be extended in three-year increments. And a fifty, fifty-dollar renewal fee is proposed. Um, so I did provide copies of, of the, uh, policy documents that, that are shown here. Again, the, the permit has been updated to reflect the proposed changes, um, to the ordinance and includes, includes that waiver for the applicants. Uh, the encroachment policy, which, um, talks about, um, you know, are the city's policy on, on public property encroachment. This has, um, been updated, uh, to allow the aeration, uh, or allow aeration equipment to be installed on publicly owned ponds. And, uh, again, staff is also proposing to delete the stormwater aeration, uh, policy and procedure document, um, as we talked about earlier. Um, just going to touch briefly on, on some of the current research. I'm not going to get too into the details, but, you know, included with the presentation are some links to, to some of these, some of the stuff that's going on. If, if you're interested, I'd highly encourage it. I think it's really interesting, but I realize not everybody thinks along the same lines as I do. Basically, you know, what we're finding is, you know, these ponds are shallow water bodies and, and our initial assumptions were that, you know, they were, because they were shallow, they were, you know, well-mixed. And we're finding that these ponds are actually highly stratified with, uh, low dissolved oxygen. And the, the issue with that is that it can lead to the release of phosphorus from the sediment. So essentially, we use our stormwater ponds as a treatment device to try to filter out pollutants before we, before the water travels downstream to its ultimate receiving water, which in Bloomington is typically Nine Mile Creek or the Minnesota River. The stratification of these ponds is being attributed to a couple of different factors, uh, one being, uh, wind, wind sheltering, and the other being, uh, impacts, uh, from chlorides, from salt use. Uh, so, and that's being seen primarily in the spring. Um, when, when sheltering is, is where like tree canopy or other structures or topography, um, limit, limit the amount of wind that's able to move across the pond. And so that limits the effect of the wind, uh, to mix that water in the pond. And so it, you know, at this point, the research is really telling us that, that these ponds are really complex and they're, they're more complex than, than lakes. And factors such as sheltering, um, and, and aquatic vegetation like, like duckweed are, are two complications that, um, that really have yet to be addressed. And, um, yeah, I'm not going to get into any other details on the, on this slide, but it's, it's complicated. So, uh, some of the staff's considerations, um, are that we, that we really don't know what the impacts of aeration will be, whether that, whether that be positive or negative. The most likely outcome is that, at this point, is that it's, uh, aeration is going to be, kind of be a moot point. You know, these ponds are, are very complex systems and they're subject to a, a really wide variety of variables, um, that vary differently based on their location and contributing watershed. Uh, from a water quality perspective, you know, ponds slow the water down when, when wa- when water is discharged into them. And that provides the ability for the pollutants to settle out of the water, uh, before the next storm event. Um, it's likely that aeration will extend the detention time required to settle out some of these, uh, some of these pollutants. And additionally, private entities, um, are generally prohibited from working on or installing, um, infrastructure on public property. And so allowing public entities the ability to install aeration has some potential to set a precedent for additional requests for private work on public property. A couple of other things, uh, in natural systems, as we said, um, you know, it's mo- most, aeration is most often a tool to prevent winter fish kills. However, aeration is often marketed, um, as a tool for pond management, you know, claiming an ability to reduce sediment depth, control aquatic veg- control, uh, aquatic vegetation, uh, and reduce bad odors in ponds. However, um, that's not really always the case. Hydrogen sulfide or that, that rotten egg smell that can, um, can be produced in ponds that, um, have anoxic conditions or are very low oxygen conditions. But often the smells and odors associated with ponds, uh, have more to do with decaying plant material rather than, um, hydrogen sulfide. Other, other things to consider is that, you know, these ponds do, um, provide spots of enjoyment for neighbors and neighborhoods. Um, and so, you know, by, by doing something like this, it does provide, uh, a sense of ownership. And, and, you know, could provide an opportunity for, you know, more neighborhood involvement and, and education as well. So, um, we did take a look around and see, you know, kind of see what other communities were doing and, and, um, see what else was out there. So we did look at these, uh, changes that are, that are shown on the screen now. However, um, you know, a lot of the depth considerations, um, most of the ponds in Bloomington average about three feet deep. Um, and so by, by adopting a, a five-foot minimum or something like that would, um, essentially for just further restrict, uh, ponds that, that are allowed to have aeration. And so we are, um, looking at moving forward with amending the existing ordinance, um, to allow for aeration on ponds. We believe that, uh, it provides a public opportunity for education and involvement. Um, with the additional, uh, research opportunities, it provide, it could, has potential to provide guidance on future natural resource management. And we believe that the permit system, uh, provides the ability to cease the installation if, uh, negative impacts become known. Um, some of the next steps then, so, um, tonight, uh, we're here, um, just to have a, have a discussion, be sure that we are on the right track. Uh, we have a Let's Talk Bloomington page, um, scheduled to go up next week, um, to, uh, to interact with the public a little bit more. And, and, and our goal of that is to interact, you know, with, regarding aeration, but also on, uh, the city's management of water resources in general and natural resources. Our, our plan would be to come back to the, to the May fifth hearing, at which point, uh, our notice for that public hearing would be, uh, published on April fifteenth. And that wraps up my presentation and I'm happy to, uh, take any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, Mr. Greedle. I'll admit, when I went through your presentation and, and just hearing your presentation now, I, I was surprised because the, you know, the general rule of thumb has always been that aeration in the pond is good for the pond. And why wouldn't you have aeration for, you know, to keep algae down, to keep the water moving and, and so on? So, I mean, I, I'll admit, I was surprised at the findings and any information in your presentation.
I think, I, I think, uh, Mayor and Council, I think the, the, the challenge comes with, with these natural systems. There's, there's a lot more, um, a lot more variables in there. Stormwater or, uh, uh, potable water and wastewater are, are controlled, you know, much more controlled. The variables are much more known, um, and we're dealing with a lot more unknowns, which, which make it a bit more challenging in the stormwater world.
Council questions. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so Brian, help me understand a little bit, this staff recommendation just at the end here, you know, amending the ordinance to allow aeration that supports research efforts. Is the concept then that if, if we were to move forward with this recommendation, that private individuals could apply for a permit? And, you know, assuming they meet all the other standards and so on, you know, provided that it, it, they demonstrate somehow that it supports a research effort? Or what, what does, how would this in effect change the ordinance? Cause this, I mean, this was brought forward because neighbors wanted to, to put in aeration systems in, in ponds that they lived nearby. What, what would be different about that? If, if we were to move forward with this recommendation?
Uh, Mayor and Councilmember Coulter, our, our idea behind this is to continue to learn more about these and, and their impact, uh, on, um, you know, on, on our ponds out there. I mean, because ultimately our goal is to improve the quality of our runoff water prior to discharging to our ultimate downstream resources. And, you know, these ponds have a function in that aspect. It doesn't mean we can't do better. Um, and so, um, what, what we're looking at moving forward with is, uh, some simple steps that can be done by these, by these, um, property owners, you know, simple things like, um, taking some photographs or, um, documenting the, uh, percent coverage of duckweed across the pond. Um, and then we have, uh, an online reporting tool that they can just, um, you know, submit some of that basic information. We're not expecting people to, you know, contract with labs and be running, uh, you know, water quality tests on a bi-weekly basis. You know, it's, it's just, you know, more anecdotal evidence to help us understand, um, any significant changes.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand this correctly, the, the, the recommendation here is, is, it doesn't sound like it's necessarily sort of a substantive difference from what we talked about before. It would basically just be saying, okay, if you're going to aerate this pond, you know, take some pictures, tell us a little bit about it so that we can learn more from this while you're doing what you wanted to do anyway beforehand. Am I correct in understanding that roughly?
Uh, Mayor and Councilmembers, yes, that, that, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, just two quick questions and then a comment. Um, you had talked about, um, in the event that there's some liability, the city would probably be at least involved. Do we know if our insurance would cover, um, any liability that we might have on this if, if we were involved?
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, um, I guess I'd rely on the city attorney to stop me if I'm wrong, but it's, it's my understanding that, um, that our insurance would likely, um, you know, help out to, to an extent. However, you know, a lot of that would, you know, our, our deductible would have to be met and things of that nature. And so, um, yeah, that's about the extent of my knowledge on insurance, I guess.
Okay, that would be as we, as we go forward, something I'd be curious about, just to make sure that it would be insurable on our end. Um, you had, uh, indicated that there was a change that it, it used to require one hundred percent of the property owners that abutted the, uh, pond to agree and that was reduced to seventy-five percent. Two questions. One, can you kind of explain the rationale of that reduced standard? And, um, two, does that have any implication on the cost of anything that does? Is there a, a formal cost-sharing approach to this? I, I'm assuming this isn't assessed or anything, it's just, they just pay for it directly and they're allowed to do it. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, uh, Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, uh, yes, there is no direct cost, uh, to the city through the permitting process. You know, the residents, um, you know, um, basically volunteer to, um, obtain the system, install it and maintain it, um, at, at their cost. Uh, as far as, uh, the question regarding, uh, the reduction from one hundred, uh, percent property owners to seventy-five percent property owners, you know, that, that was done in, um, I guess because it gives, it, it has the potential to give one person, um, uh, too much influence over, over decisions. And so by getting seventy-five percent of, of the population around the pond to agree to it, um, it's the vast majority of them and doesn't give, you know, one person in particular, uh, total control of the decision-making.
That makes sense.
And I guess, and as, and as far as, uh, as far as Costco, you know, there is no, uh, cost sharing. All properties are treated equally across, you know, across, for the permitting process. So if one property owns, you know, three-quarters of the abutting property and one owns, you know, just, you know, a small sliver of it, they're all under the same requirements and the cost would be worked out amongst the, the property owners.
Okay, so we don't have to be involved in that negotiation, they figured it out. Um, along the lines of Councilmember Coulter's question, um, with regards to the research, that was one of the areas that I had concern about is the research seemed to be fairly vague and, and general, yet you, in the presentation, mentioned organizations that are looking to do this type of research, the U of M, uh, the Stormwater Research Council, watershed districts. And I am wondering why we wouldn't require them to be part of some type of more formal study with one of those and/or other organizations in order to get more robust data. As you noted, um, some of the assumptions that, uh, people had made about these systems are maybe not proving to be true and people are interested in learning more. Why, why not use this as an opportunity to get better information? As opposed to, you know, with, with all respect, photos and just some general, uh, anecdotal data?
Uh, Mayor and Councilmembers, the, um, our thought on that was that, you know, there's not room for every pond and, and every study. The, the university has, has limited staff and, um, if, if we expect these ponds to be part of a more robust, um, study like that, I, I just, I don't believe that we are giving people any more ability to, uh, provide this, uh, provide aeration than, than what's currently, um, in the ordinance. There may be a few, you know, if we can partner on a few of them, um, I, I think we will capitalize on that, but I don't think there's any guarantee that, you know, if we get a whole bunch of ponds that want to put, you know, aeration in them, that we would be able to include them all in a study.
Thank you for the answer.
Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Beloga, Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I just have, um, one additional question. So you, uh, highlighted the environmental justice areas concerned and talked about the Sustainability Commission's concerns, um, equity concerns and their recommendation for the city to pilot the aeration systems on one or two ponds, Wright's and Smith Park. But those aren't actually listed explicitly on the staff recommendation slide. Um, am I assuming that that they that this to move, that you are recommending to move forward with these one to two pilot sites?
We're losing you, Councilmember Carter. You were cutting out there. Maybe if you could turn your camera off and ask the question again, maybe we can get the audio and we'll, we'll get it correctly. Maybe if you could turn your camera off and ask the question again, maybe we can get the audio and we'll, we'll get it correctly. Why don't we move on to Councilmember Beloga? If he's got a question, we'll double back to Councilmember Carter if, uh, when her her Wi-Fi speed catches up a little bit. Councilmember Beloga.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Brian, the city has property along a good number of the ponds in Bloomington. Is that correct?
Uh, Mayor and Councilmember Beloga, yes, that would be correct.
So how would we control the vote in those instances? Would we be a neutral party? Would we be an advocate or would we be at the center?
Uh, Mayor and Councilmembers, we would essentially be a neutral party in that. Through the process of issuing the permit, we are, you know, thereby granting the ability, ability to, to do so. However, the city would not be included in any cost sharing or financial responsibility.
And, and with respect to the seventy-five percent of the vote of the landowners, it would be excluding the city's portions, is that what I'm understanding now?
Mayor and Councilmembers, yes, that, so the city would, the city would be excluded. I mean, I guess the other way to view it would be the city would be supportive of it by issuing the permit.
Okay. Uh, but we would not enter into the voting and the voting would exclude the, the city's percentage of the line.
That is correct, yes.
So then a question on encroachment. As I envision how this operates, you need electrical service to operate the pumps. And generally that's done through some kind of a pillar. And would that pillar, with the electrical service, be allowed on city property or would that have to be the residents' property? I'm just trying to understand how far the encroachment goes.
Understood. Uh, Mayor and Councilmembers, that, that, that pedestal, if it's required, is likely to be located on city property. Each pond is going to be different. You know, uh, so I can't say with certainty that they'll all be the same. But I think, I think generally speaking, that pedestal would most likely be operated or be located on city property. Um, I, I would add that, that, uh, that an electrical permit is required as part of this, whether it's a a solar-based aeration system or a, you know, electrical service-based installation.
And, and I would think that the majority, because of the power demands, are going to be electric-driven rather than solar. And why are just, just again, looking for information, Brian, uh, what was the reasoning to allow the placement of the pedestals on city property? Because I, I would see that there'd be obvious needs for the, you know, lines to cross and then there's the pump and then there's the people who cross onto the property to do maintenance and so on. But uh, the physical pedestal is something that I thought would be insistent on being off the city property. So can you help me understand that?
Uh, Mayor and Councilmembers, you know, the location of the pedestal is, is, is highly dependent on, on where the power source is going to be. And so you know, if there was an ability to have it located on, on private property, that would be ideal. But I, I can't say with certainty that that's going to be the case in, in all of them. And so you're right, there will be additional underground utilities, you know, crossing city park property in order to, in order to facilitate a, a wired connection.
And, and then there would also be a meter associated with that, I suspect, in addition to just a pedestal.
That is correct, yes. It would have to be metered as well.
Uh, so doesn't that push us further into the, that now it becomes the darker gray area of encroachment uses? You know, we've had through the years, not necessarily with water resources, but with just public lands, people landscaping and putting gardens and put fences on and so on. What, what would be different between that use and uh, the more permanent use of the pedestal and meters?
Uh, Mayor and Councilmembers, I, I don't believe there is a lot of difference and, and part of staff's concern is that, you know, by, by allowing, by allowing these, these installations on public property that we are going to potentially set the precedent that, that, that other people may have a different view of, of what can encroach onto, onto city property. And Councilmember Beloga is, is correct that, you know, as staff, we, we see lots of different instances, whether that's landscaping, retaining walls, fences, people asking to grade city property for, you know, for their own benefit and and at this point, the, the encroachment policy is very clear that, you know, that that's just not, not acceptable and not allowed. And you know, by, by going down this route with aeration in, in ponds, it's, you know, in, in contrast to that.
Okay, appreciate the information, Brian. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Carter, is your connection restored?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um, so I just wanted to clarify something. So um, you talked about the environmental justice areas of concern and the sustainability commission's concern and then recommendations to do one to two pilot ponds and I just, I didn't see those specific pilots called out in the staff recommendation slide. And so I just was curious if that is part of your recommendation or if it's not.
Uh, Mayor and Councilmembers, at, at this point, we are continuing to gather information on, on that. Uh, we have, you know, put together a planning level estimate of what we think it would take. I would be interested in hearing if, if, if council is, you know, has an appetite for, you know, for that. The other thing that we still need to, to look at is how applicable those ponds are to providing additional information to managing our the bulk majority, the bulk majority of our ponds, which are quite a bit smaller and, and not nearly as deep as, as both of those two ponds.
Great. Well, I guess I'll just speak for myself that I would be very interested in continuing to explore this as an option from an equity perspective. And as we think about research and implications of research, and then I think if we do go down this path or if, yeah, if staff recommends it and we go down it, you know, I'd be curious. I would want to see what kind of community engagement of the local neighbors would happen in those areas of specific ponds. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. Got, got several questions here. I'll try to be quick here. So with the staff recommendation, if we were to strike the first number there, what impact would that have to how this gets implemented?
Uh, Mayor and Councilmembers, I mean, I think, I think the primary focus of, of this is a public opportunity and an opportunity to provide education. I don't believe, personally, I don't believe that aeration in these ponds is, is likely to be the answer. I don't think that it is going to provide residents the benefits that they are often sold when, when looking at aeration. But it does provide an ability for, for us, you know, for education and, and and an opportunity for communities to come together. So aeration is not going to be the, the cure-all. It's likely many different facets of management.
So I guess, uh, when I, when I look at that recommendation, I sort of, just as from this one council member's perspective, would like to see a, a little more structure to that. And I heard another council member kind of mention that or talk about that, but I don't know. Um, and I know there's the, the issue in terms of being excluded from formal studies. Um, but, um, I, I think there needs to be a little bit more there because I just, to me, it just feels like we just kind of put that in there. Uh, and then there's really no follow-up to that. So it just feels, it just feels like a throwaway phrase to me. But, uh, I'm certainly willing to see how that progresses as we look to, to work on the policy piece of it. So then, uh, one question that I did have is around if, if one of these ponds, and I'm not sure if there's an example out there, I haven't gone out there and done an exhaustive look, where you have a condo or an apartment, how would that be handled with that seventy-five percent piece? Would, would each owner of the condo have to sign a party to this? How, how does that work?
Uh, Mayor and Councilmembers, that, that would be most, most often, uh, those condos or, or that have some sort of HOA association with them. So that's typically how we've worked with them. But there are a few instances where they're individually owned without, you know, any kind of structured management. And so, you know, we would just have to work through those individually.
I'd just be, I'd be curious how that, that option, you don't have to answer that right now. So then, um, I, I appreciate during your presentation, you talked about just some things in terms of what other, what other cities are doing. I know you didn't have a ton of time to kind of research that. But one question that I did have is in terms of other cities obviously are allowing this aeration stuff to take place. What types of impacts has that had for those cities around encroachment? You know, have, have they seen an, an increase in terms of that, that encroachment? And what's, what has been those impacts that those cities have seen? Once they've allowed, you know, either this or whatever else to get them to their, their standpoint with that?
Uh, Mayor and Councilmembers, I only got one response from, from neighboring city regarding encroachments and the response was that by the time they get done explaining the different encroachments and the different agreements that need to happen, it usually just turns most people away. And they are not in, they seek out something else.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see as you get more of those responses in, um, uh, what, what those look like. So I'd just be curious, just so that the public here has a better understanding of, of, uh, what happens when we, when we do this. Uh, or if we were to open this, this piece of it up. One just comment I wanted to make was, uh, and I also wanted to clarify, when you, you talked about the, the Rice Lake example, was that, was that fifty thousand dollars, uh, just to get it set up? And how much was it per year?
Mayor and Councilmembers, I believe it was, like, so the, the total was fifty grand. When I broke it down, I think it was, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but I think it was about thirty grand to get it going and then about another twenty grand to operate it and monitor it.
And so these are some of the concerns that I have, you know, when we talk about equity and inclusion, are some of these expenses for some of these ponds that are out there? Is it just unattainable for a particular neighborhood to be able to, uh, to, to pull this off on their own? Unless there's some kind of grant. I'm just wondering, how, how does one go about doing that in some of the circumstances? And are we creating a, a situation there? So that's one concern I do have as we kind of go down this. And so I think the question that I have, just from a policymaker standpoint, is this something after we kind of get this study piece done or moratorium, if it may be, if, if we end up doing that, I don't know, you know, what the, what the, the idea is long-term, but once we kind of do the study piece, do we want to look at this from a city perspective as to whether or not, you know, we as a city should be driving this kind of moving forward? So that's kind of a question I kind of have for myself, not necessarily looking for staff response from that. It's certainly welcome to it, but I just have that, that question. And then private entities right now are able to, to do this aeration on their own property because they own that, that property. They just have to get a permit before they do it, right?
Mayor and Councilmembers, that's correct. Private ponds on private property that have a connection to the public storm sewer system.
And that, is that, that's not the case with public, right? The public, if you had your own pond, do you need, do you need a permit for your own aeration on your own, you know, private property as well? I just want to make sure I'm clear on my mind that.
No, those are specifically exempt.
Okay. All right. So then, uh, I guess the last things I would say is that, uh, from a comment just to my colleagues that I'm just concerned from a long-term risk standpoint, uh, I'm concerned about the liability of encroachment. And then just the access to those that are economically challenged within the city of Bloomington. Now, we, we look at the, the Rice Lake example. I, I don't know how a, a neighborhood or would necessarily go about that unless they were able to get a grant. And I imagine there's other examples out there that may be even more expensive than that. So I'm just, as we look at this, I just want to be sure that we're being careful. I know it's, it's, you know, it's certainly it's something, it's in my own district and I'm, I'm, I'm very supportive of, of the idea, but I'm just concerned from a, from a full citywide, uh, what we're trying to do here, if that makes sense, uh, from a policy standpoint. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Council, additional questions? Comments to bring forward? Mr. Greedle, what's next?
Well, our next step would be to, to actually come and amend the ordinance. I know that there's interest out there to get it amended from the neighborhood group. As you're well aware, it was quite nice out today. The open water season has begun. So I think there is some pressure on, on staff to get something in front of council that they are willing to move with. Or, or willing, I guess, to provide staff the guidance that we need to continue to prohibit aeration a, as we currently have to date on, on public ponds. So we're looking at returning on, on, on May fifth or May third, excuse me, for, for a public hearing regarding the amendments. Either way, you know, an amendment needs to be made to allow it in public ponds or an amendment needs to be made to fix the typographical error that is currently in the ordinance to specifically prohibit aeration on public ponds as, as was discussed at the November meeting.
All right. Thank you so much. I do want to point out to folks, if you put that slide back up, that on the twelfth, it will, is the tentative published date for the Let's Talk Bloomington webpage. And I encourage people to, to use that if at all possible. It's a great feedback opportunity. It's a great mechanism to, to get questions answered and to, to gain public input on items specifically like this. So please do, if you have a, an opinion on this, please do get into Let's Talk Bloomington and, and leave your, leave your message for the city council and, and staff to take a look at. All right, council, anything final? If not, thank you, Mr. Greedle. Thanks for sticking with us tonight. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Moving on to item eight point two, which is an appointment to our Advisory Board of Health. And I think we, we appointed folks to our Advisory Board of Health not too long ago. And it, we, we discovered as we, after we made the appointment, that one of the people who was appointed was not able to serve. And so what we do, what we have is a consumer seat to fill and it's an unexpired two-year term that would end the end of February in 2023. And we have eight applicants and, I mean, I know we say this every time, but my goodness, we had some qualified folks to apply for this. I was very impressed with the number of folks and, and the quality of the applicants on this. And unfortunately, we only have one spot to, to offer these folks. So we will have to narrow it down. And council, I'm assuming you've had a chance to take a look over the applications and assuming we are ready to move forward and vote on a new member for the Advisory Board of Health. I'm going to take your silence as a yes. So we will do that. And why don't we move forward with this? And so our Advisory Board of Health, we have eight applicants and we'll be able to vote for one. And what I think we will do if we do not get to a a consensus or a majority vote on the first time through, as we have in the past, we'll eliminate folks that have not received any votes. And then take a look at the, the totals from the other vote receivers and figure out where we make the, the next cut. If it's, uh, if it's multiple votes or a, a single vote, or we'll just have to figure out exactly where it all, how it all works out. So on our sheet, and I know we keep rotating who gets to start on all of this. And on our sheet, I think our first person up is Councilmember Beloga. And if you could, please, as you make your vote, if you could announce the, the number of the person and the person's last name. Just to make it easier for Ms. Christensen. Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I vote for number one, Bustamante Ortega.
Councilmember Carter.
I vote for number one, Bustamante Ortega.
Councilmember Coulter.
I will vote for number five, Johnson.
Councilmember Loman.
I'm going to go for number seven, Schmitz.
Councilmember Martin.
Mayor, I will vote for number one, Bustamante Ortega.
Councilmember Nelson.
Number one, Bustamante Ortega.
And I will cast my vote, even though we have a, a majority here, I'm casting my vote for number six, Schluter Eichen. I was impressed with that application, but it looks as though if my math is correct here, that. Ronald Bustamante Ortega received four of the seven votes, which is a majority. I would look for a motion to appoint Bustamante Ortega to the advisory board of health. We have a motion and a second to appoint Ronald Bustum, Bustum, excuse me, Bustamante Ortega. To the consumer's feet on the advisory board of health for an unexpired two-year term ending the 28th of February in 2023. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you, mayor, it sounded like two people were speaking at the same time, can I, who made the motion in the second?
The motion, I'm going to back out.
Believe councilmember Martin with the motion, and then the second was?
Beloga.
Councilmember Beloga, thank you for that help.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Beloga? Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye, motion carries seven zero, congratulations to our new appointee. And as I said, thank you for everybody who applied, I was very impressed with all of the applicants to this position once again, so. Find ways to stay involved, find ways to stay active in your city, there's plenty of opportunities all over the place. Move on to item 8.3, which is our city council policy and issue update. Mr. Verbogi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, only item I have this evening is a quick legislative update. We've had it on the agenda for the last couple of meetings, but since we are having a concurrent meeting with the Port Authority tomorrow evening, legislative update is part of that conversation. So that's why it was not on the agenda this evening. And of course, something happened today that made it necessary to make a comment. And that is the House omnibus tax bill was released today. We'd previously reported to the council that the property tax committee report had been issued. And this is the subsequent step from that, so the House omnibus tax bill. Includes the provisions that the city has been seeking, the two TIF districts. At one at American Boulevard and one at 98th and Aldrich are both included in the omnibus tax bill. As is a, essentially a blanket sales tax exemption for. For fire and police station projects, as council's aware, we've been seeking a sales tax exemption for our upcoming fire station replacement project. And it has been the practice of the legislature to grant individual project exemptions. What is in the House omnibus tax bill is more of a blanket exemption for fire and police, so we'll see how that does in, in negotiations moving forward. We're expecting that the Senate is going to come out with their bill either late this week or possibly next week. So we should have an idea of how those two are going to line up, but that's good progress, so happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor, and that's all I have this evening.
That is good news, any questions of Mr. Verbogi on that? I don't see anyone, anyone else, anyone with anything else to add? Councilmember Loman and then councilmember Beloga, councilmember Loman.
Oh, mayor, I, all I wanted to do is just briefly, just, you know, recently, we kind of brought to end our, our DMV. And I just wanted to thank those workers for their service to the community and to the broader Minnesota community. I just thank them for all that they've done over all these many years for that, that work, thank you, mayor, and thank you, council.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you. Just before the council meeting, I had a call from a gentleman who was calling about. His receipt of an email from his association. Notifying him that all players on any public owned property would need to wear a mask. And he wanted to know who to talk to about that because, and, and he brought up a good concern. He said he wasn't concerned about when they're sitting on the bench and that type of thing. But when the kids are in center field by themselves on a July day. Where it's quite hot and uncomfortable. He didn't understand the. Operation of the masking request. And wanted to know who to talk to about that to get better definition and understanding. And frankly, I didn't know, because I had not had that item hit my radar, so. Direction, please.
Mr. Verbogi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmember Beloga, if you would share that gentleman's contact info with me, I will make sure we follow up with him first thing in the morning. I would concur with you that that one has not hit my radar screen either. I don't know if that's an association rule or if that's a direction from the city of Bloomington, but we'll find that out first thing in the morning and make sure it's communicated.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Beloga?
Manager Verbogi, I had those same questions of him, but he said it was implied that it was a city directed item, so. I'm glad to hear that, I'm not the only one on guard on that, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, just a quick follow up on that, if the city manager could just let us all know what the status of that is and where it came from, that I would very much appreciate it as well.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I will certainly do that.
Councilmember Coulter?
Well, thank you, mayor, I, I hesitated on bringing this up, but now this is, this is, it's, it's happened again, so I, I wanted to raise the issue, I believe it's one. That I, I dare say is, is of preeminent importance to the city of Bloomington. I think it's, it's something that the entire community wants to have input on. And that is how councilmember Nelson wears his hair during council meetings. I believe this should be something that we discuss at a future, I, I just, I think, I personally feel insulted that I'm not consulted beforehand.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Coulter, we could probably start a discussion on Let's Talk Bloomington if that's council's direction.
Well, I've got a number for.
I, I thought, I thought it looked good on you, it, it does look good on you, Sean, to, to wear it back like that, looks good on you. Last thing that I wanted to add, Saturday morning, councilmember Martin and I were over at Marsh Lake Playfield for a bit to see for the, the extravaganza, which was the. In the past, would have been the, the Easter egg hunt and, but this was a drive-through event in the Marsh Lake Playfield, Playfield parking lot. Bloomington Police, Bloomington Fire, BAA, Bloomington Baseball, Angelica, the Optimists, they were all there. It was, it was, it was a beautiful day. I managed to get sunburned from here to here, which is not a surprise, but it, it was a beautiful day, it was a good turnout, it was a lot of fun. And I want to just compliment and thank the park staff for pulling that all together. And once again, making lemonade out of the lemons that we've been, you know, dealing with over the past year. I think they've done an outstanding job and the entire staff has done outstanding job, just reacting to this pandemic and trying to find ways either to keep people involved. To maintain engagement, to just make it more fun for folks, and they've done a great job. And so thanks for, for your work, for all the city staff, park and rec staff in particular this time. But I know everybody's put in the, the extra hours and the extra effort to, to accommodate the city services that go on and in the midst of a pandemic. Of the likes we've never seen before and hopefully we'll never see again, so. Anything else to add, council? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I heard a motion by councilmember Coulter and a second by councilmember Carter to adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you, Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye, we are adjourned on a seven zero vote, thank you all very much. Council, we'll see you tomorrow night at our, our council port meeting and have a good rest of your evening and a good day tomorrow, and we'll see you tomorrow evening, thanks much.